It being six o'clock, I'd like to call the April 25th Selectmen Meeting to Order and ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20E, this meeting is being recorded by Mansfield Cable Access Channel. It'll be broadcast at various times over several days. The law permits members of the public to make their own recordings of this meeting after giving notice to the chair and subject to certain restrictions. If anyone in the audience intends to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, I would ask that you please inform me at this time by coming to the microphone and stating your name and address. Your cooperation is appreciated and the master moves down a white head will be taping. First order of business, we have consideration to reappoint Austin Horowitz to the Serpent, as a Serpent Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint D. Austin Horowitz to serve as a Serpent Commissioner member on behalf of the town of Mansfield for a one-year term expiring on May 22nd, 2019.
Second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that this is Austin's third or fourth year as our Serpent Representative representing the Board of Selectmen. We also have a representative from the planning board. I'm not sure if that position is filled, but he serves in this capacity enthusiastically and I'm happy to vote for him for reappointment.
I would agree, and I think we're lucky to have somebody as qualified as Austin to recall that job, so. He's a good guy. Okay, saying nothing further, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None motion carries, five zero. Just may I, right? We have consideration of a water connection in Foxborough. Mr. Asinere, good evening.
Good evening. It might be a surprise to some of you.
Speak up, Lee, I'm sorry.
It might be a surprise to some of you, but the town of Mansfield has had customers in the town of Foxborough going back 100 years. This is because the town, we have our foolish hill tank in the town of Foxborough and they don't have water off of our, some areas off of our pipe, so we've had some people on Mansfield water for, as you can see on the agreement. Actually, I've talked to the town of Foxborough and we probably should update that agreement. We, but we, they agree that it's something we should at some point in time update. It dates back 100 years. But basically, our water use in Mansfield has been stagnant or declining for the last eight, nine years. If anything, like last year, we pumped out a, or we sold one point, an average of 1.52 million gallons a day. Back in 2010, we sold 1.76 MGD and the average has been right around 1.6 to 1.7. So we're far below where we were, say, 20 years ago when you all remember we had, you know, when we had some water issues. So our consumption, we've lost some large customers, so our usage is way down. So the reason I'm recommending this, Stufold, I mean, we do have a history with the, in Foxborough and this would give, would provide us approximately $70,000 in connection fees and permit fees. And then I did a quick, just curiosity, what that type of house, what they use, using a recent similar-sized development in Mansfield, and they use 2,000 to 3,000 a year depending on how much, because most of them are four bedrooms with sprinklers. So I'm looking at this as water revenues. Added revenues for the town of Mansfield.
Okay. I'll open to the questions with Selectmen Nepton first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as much as I want to be a good neighbor, I really would like it known that, you know, it seems to me in my years of being on this board, other towns have reached out to us for whatever things are, whatever it is, this type of thing. And, you know, I hope other towns reciprocate when we need things, okay? And I'm not sure maybe we let the town manager, if we, if this vote gets voted in the positive, fine. But, you know, believe me, I want to be a good neighbor, but I also want the understanding that, you look, when Mansfield needs something from somebody else, then we hope we get the cooperation and not say, no. You know what I mean? I mean, we don't have to do this, right?
Right. And ironically, we have a similar line that we have some customers on, that's the city of Edelboro.
Again, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm.
In Mansfield.
It's important to know that. We're trying, you know, we're trying to be a good neighbor, but I would expect reciprocation if we needed, whatever.
Selectmen DeVicchio.
We, out of curiosity, when there's a water ban or restriction in Mansfield, does it cover these homes?
These customers have our meters, they would be treated the same way. They would have.
You'd put a sign in each of their homes.
Water police go to Foxborough?
And to be honest nowadays, with the way the state is on the water bans, generally, most of the neighboring communities, I think, I think last time when we put a water ban, actually, Foxborough already had theirs in place anyway.
Refresh my memory if I have one of this. Is this development already built?
No, 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 I mean, I think they might have, the town approved a single connection for a house that's on, I believe, Belcher Road, and now they're cutting in a road.
A new subdivision going in or something?
And the subdivision's going in, that's the additional 19. But the one four-bedroom house, that's the one I used as a guide as what they had paid, was already, was approved, I think, last year or the year before.
I think it would be prudent in these types of situations, and who knows how many of these will come up in the future as that land gets built out, to be asked that to be before a road is built? Because we, we're kind of, we're kind of a more difficult choice at this point if someone's on.
I'm not sure the road is built, to be honest.
Okay, all right, so it's early in the process.
Yeah, because they've been working with, with Kurt Gaffney, the Water Operations Manager, to make sure that they, they need to build it to our standards also. So they know until it's approved, it's not.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Selectmen Schumfeld.
Thank you. Why? Why not, why are they unable to attach the Foxborough water line?
They don't have water lines there.
Just not in the area, or it's just inconvenient?
They don't have, they don't have water line in that area. I think at one point they considered bringing it further, but they don't have a water line in that area.
Define in that area, is that within a couple of blocks, is it within?
I don't know the exact distance.
So it is a question of convenience here?
Yes. And the town of Fox, the town of Foxborough, I did consult them to make sure, I said, if I'm going to recommend something to you, I want to make sure that the, the water and sewer in Foxborough is, and they are supportive of it.
Second question, they're paying the same rate as any other?
Yes.
User in Mansfield?
Yes.
Okay. And third is, how much of our town, current residents in the town, the 7,000 homes and so forth, on well water right now and would rather be on?
Minimal, minimal. Town of Mansfield, I believe it's less than 1%.
Any particular areas where it is more prominent?
I was, I only, I only knew a few. I'm not sure at this point in time. I'd have to go look, it's, it's very minimal.
I was at the Ballfields last night and one individual, I think it's north of Cousins Pizza, is on, on well, because they were unable to cross the stream or something, so.
No, but it was by, it was by their choice, them.
Possibly, regardless.
Yeah, there was probably a water service out front, but they could connect.
They probably didn't want to pay to go under the stream, likely.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Selectmen Ryan.
Sure, Haley. Couple of quick questions. This one house that's already there, you said it was $3,600, was there a water bill for last year?
No, 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 this is, this is, we do a per-bedroom connection charge and then there's inspection fees. I actually looked up what, this was strictly for them to, it was a 2460, that was the char, the capital charge, and then the rest, and then there's, you know, there's the, well, costs for the.
That was just to get one house hooked up?
Yes.
So the revenues would be basically 19 times that amount, roughly?
That's what I said, roughly 70,000.
And then what, what does it cost this?
Because there'd also be some fees to inspect the main.
Right.
So that's what I figured, it's about 68 if you just apply this by 19, and I figure with some additional revenues for inspection, the main's probably roughly 70,000.
Right. And then ongoing revenues would be roughly?
That's what I said, I compared to a recent one, that's a similar-sized house here in Mansfield, and they range from 2,000 to 3,000 depending on the summer.
Right.
They were all four bedrooms, I, we picked them randomly, asked the billing supervisor to pick some, and they were all four bedrooms, and they all had separate house meter and sprinkler meter, and they range between 2,000 and 3,000 a year, which is way more than the average in Mansfield.
And what will it cost us to hook them up? I mean, will, will we incur any expenses to get them?
No, I mean, the one, they, they have to, all the cost of theirs.
So I mean, like, you know, our, is it our personnel who are hooking them up and we're paying their salaries, that kind of stuff?
No, no, our personnel will be doing inspections and they're paying for the inspections.
Okay, all right. So it's revenue positive for us?
That's the only reason.
More customers?
Yeah. Especially when, you know, last year was, was a tough year, going, going into this, this current fiscal year has been, has been tough on the revenues because of the water bans and.
Right.
Like I said, looking, looking back nine years, it's, you know, 557 million gallons last year versus 641 in 2010. Big difference. So, you know, I'm looking at it as the actual revenue.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Once the water mains laid, who's responsible for the water main?
These, because everything, everything is going to our standards. I think you can set whatever you want, but in talking to Kurt, he preferred.
What does that mean?
Because it's right off of ours, he preferred that we maintain them, that we maintain the subdivision.
Okay, so if, let's just say it's 800 feet of water main.
Yeah.
30 years from now, they need 800 new feet of water main. We're paying for the water main?
I guess it's not, if they're paying the same rates as anyone else, it'd be no difference than, you know, replacing a section of main anywhere else.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, I guess it's a technical issue. If someone in Mansfield were to not pay their water bill, it would be on the municipal lien certificate, right? For real estate purposes, if they go to sell their property. How does this work if it's another town?
Another county.
Another county.
I think what we, I guess, we've, we've done, over the last 10 years, probably only a handful of liens.
Yeah, but that's not the point.
It's not much, we, we do shut offs. So I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I'm sure it's not the same.
I'm not going to hold up my vote on that, but can you get back to us on that?
Sure.
Because there needs to be a method, a process to make sure we get paid.
Again, I think one of the things in my conversation with the town of Foxborough EPW is, you know, we have an agreement that's over 100 years old. We probably should sit down and the two towns look at it, and that's the type of thing that could be included in the new agreement.
Mr. Chairman, if I may on that?
Certainly.
I think it would be a great idea to be able to not only update the agreement, but specifically for the billing purposes, that the billing would actually happen through the town of Foxborough on behalf of the town of Mansfield.
Good.
So therefore, if there isn't some type of an issue like that, they would leave the property, get the money, and then owe it back to the town of Mansfield.
You know where I'm going.
Versus the town of Mansfield billing someone who lives in Foxborough.
Okay.
So that's something that we could certainly sit down if the board so desires.
Good answer. Is somebody inclined to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the water connection for a 19-lot subdivision on property located behind 108 Belcher Road in Foxborough, subject to paying all fees associated with the connection to the town of Mansfield.
Second, any discussion?
Just real quick, do we know who the builder is? Because me being in real estate, I just thought of, I don't know if I have to abstain.
Foxborough Land Partners LLC.
Do we know who that is?
They're from Hingham, it says.
Huh?
There says they're from Hingham.
All right, that's fine, you go ahead.
The builder, the builder on the first house, at least whoever took out the permit was Larkin and Larkin.
Okay, I'm all set.
Just want to follow up to Kevin's comment there. Would you try and do that billing by the Foxborough Water Department for any existing clients as well, or?
It would be to be able to redo the system of which we built today.
Across the scale, okay, good.
Yes.
Good.
You like that, how's Steve?
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None motion carries, five zero. And I understand people, you know, you're concerned about, you know, if we need things. I think we kind of are starting to look at things regionally around here, whether it's, you know.
It's fine.
Mutual aid, sewer, water, dispatch, and.
It's not a big issue, but just.
No, but I understand what you're saying.
So he'll take care of it.
It's actually something that the town of Foxborough is helping us out on a daily basis now.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have CIP budget presentation, which we had talked about at our joint meeting. Neil was not there, so Neil might have some questions. Steve had some issues regarding the borrowing and Jess had some issues regarding particular items on the list. So we'll start with you, Jess, as far as your list.
Yeah, I appreciate, first of all, Scott, good job about the, you know, on all the work you guys did. I had a couple of questions, one regarding the fire engine and I got some, I spoke to Chief Bolgergini, and he explained to me the issue with the Pierce truck that, in layman's terms, it's rotting. I mean, that's the best way to say it, and, you know, we can't have important equipment failing.
It actually is, is rotting, it's serious rotten.
So, you know, God forbid something happens, we can't not have the equipment, so I'm okay with that. The Plymouth Street Fire Station needs work. Obviously, we know that, that's like another 600,000. My only thought, in general, just a general comment, is just, you see, there's a lot of money being spent, but pretty much everything on there is kind of stuff that's kind of, should have been done a while ago.
Well, the Plymouth Street.
The building next door is a wreck, all due respect to.
Both of those buildings. We've actually sort of kicked that can down the road a little bit, and we now have opportunities to actually finalize and finish that work, so it would be exciting to get some of these things done.
So, you know, that being said, you know, as long as it's really not going to be a negative, that much of a negative impact on our taxes, then we need to do it, because it's all going to get worse. So, again, we can't, we can't compromise public safety. A big part of that capital budget is public safety stuff, so we really don't have a choice. You know, we need the fire truck, we need to fix, and just so the folks at home know, the repairs for the fire station are the Plymouth Street Fire Station, it's not for North Main Street, so we made that clear at the finance committee meetings, just in case anybody's watched this meeting, these are repairs for Plymouth Street. And that building has its issues too, unfortunately, so.
However, if we complete these repairs, the lifespan of that building, we're looking 20 to 25 years. So it's, it's a very solid investment. It's, it's really correcting some things we probably should not have done in the first place, i.e. there's residential windows and siding on that building, part of what's being addressed. So, you know, we took a few.
I don't think anybody's going to question that, that was probably built on the cheap back then.
Well, it was, but we do have the opportunity to correct it at a reasonable cost and really get the life out of that building that we like to see.
So it, again, no impact to North Main Street, and, you know, down the road, we're going to have to talk about North Main Street, what we're going to do with that, and maybe those funds stay, if we, if we, I don't know if we keep it, if we keep it, if we sell it, maybe those funds stay and use it for fire equipment or something, because that would be a good use of money to keep that with the fire department and get that.
The best value to the town is going to be some discussion.
Trucks don't go away, ambulances don't go away, and they're getting more expensive, so, anyway, that's it.
Mr. Dumas, did you have any information regarding the, the borrowing or?
Sure, and then also we'll go into that as a review as well when we get to the budget presentation for this evening.
Okay.
But specifically, John Stabrook and I took quite a bit of time and developed what we thought was a responsible philosophy to be able to deal with specifically Plymouth Street Fire Station building improvements for the 660,000, the Memorial Hall building improvements for 360,000, and the replacement of Engine Four for 660,000. So it's 1.68 million of what we're looking for that. And I wanted to be able to let you know that what we're looking to be able to do is to be able to, while we're asking for the authorization to borrow short-term for these three things, it is our intention to pay this off fully with cash at fall town meeting. So it will only be out there, we may not even have to use the loan authorization at all, just by floating additional cash that we have on hand, but at least if something happens, we do have the authorization. But then, in essence, this would not even impact fiscal 19, and it would not impact fiscal '20 or beyond. So we'll pay this off with cash in the fall. But what we had talked about at capital improvements was the importance of the fact that these projects have to get going. It's the time of year, it's the lead time that we need to be able to construct, it'll be a year from the date that we put in a purchase order till we get a new Engine Four. That's just for that project alone. And then we also are saving on the mobilization cost for the building improvements, that there's already a portion of funds that are available today for Memorial Hall and for Plymouth Street. But what we're trying to do is to deal with the whole building envelope together and to be able to save dollars just by mobilization one time. But in order to do that, we do need the actual authorization. But it is our intention to be able to pay that off fully in the fall with cash.
All right, Steve, this was your, your issue, so any questions you have, you can address them now to the town manager or to Scott. Put them both in the firing seat.
Certainly, it's not going to be a firing squad. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you hit the nail on the head there, Kevin. This is a change in philosophy, but it's a good change in philosophy. You know, these are projects, like I said a couple of weeks ago, we have to do, they must get done. I agree with every last one of them, the question is how do we pay for them? And how do we pay for them so it doesn't harm our budgets? So in previous years, we had borrowed 2 million a year. Last year, we borrowed 3.4 million because we had Main Street project, I think it was, I forget which project it was, but, you know, it's reasonable, and that borrowing goes, that's not debt exclusion, that's debt inclusion, for lack of a better term, it's included in the budget. So our change in philosophy means are we going to be borrowing 5 million a year going forward, or? Can you describe more about the change in philosophy, both how much do you think we should be borrowing over time, as well as how long should that debt be on the books?
Sure. So for the types of, it really depends on a couple of things. One, for those type of projects that aren't multimillion dollars, but they're still sizable, those things that we can bundle together, and when we're estimating what we think and appear what our free cash is going to be, we know that we're going to have at least 1.6 million in free cash next year, when it's actually certified by October, hopefully the second week of October of 2018. And that way, when we call for town meeting, we can pay that off entirely. We're also going to be looking at, since we're hitting our stabilization goal, we're going to be looking into taking some of our free cash and proposing that that go into a special purpose stabilization fund for capital equipment. So we know that fire engines, with an engine of 660,000 or a ladder truck at 1.2 million, they are extremely costly, so we're going to be looking at doing some things like that. And then also some other things that typically it would be bundled together to borrow, those smaller items you'd like to try to bundle now and to deal with free cash and to deal with some of those items when we get to the point where we're dealing with a fall meeting. But also the fact of looking more long-term, what we're looking for is the amount that we should be borrowing, and that's going to determine upon a couple of things. One, we're not looking to borrow unless there's an exigent circumstance of which we have to in fiscal '20. So we're asking not to be able to borrow in fiscal '20, and we wouldn't be doing a new road bond in fiscal '20, but that we would reengage in fiscal '21. And so we're not looking to add any new debt in fiscal 2020, which is different from what has been happening before, specifically because of the fact that this year, it's not just the 2 million dollars coming on for the road bond for this year's construction season, we also have the 1.4 million as part of this capital plan that meets the 1.6 million dollar federal grant for the matching requirement. So this is a little bit more and of what we're used to to be able to do this year, so we felt it would be most prudent for the taxpayer and for the budgetary purposes to be able to take a hold on fiscal 2020, we'll allocate some free cash towards the road bond, we're going to have some money left over from the amount that we're borrowing this year in addition to Chapter 90 in fiscal '19, in addition to another 700,000 coming in Chapter 90 for fiscal '20, that we feel comfortable in not having to borrow anything in fiscal 2020 unless, of course, it's an exigent circumstance. So we will take a one-year reprieve from borrowing in fiscal '20, but that we would reengage again at some dollar amount that's not determined at this point on the road bond, that's going to take some more time, we're going to refresh our pavement management plan, and we're going to be able to come up with some more fruitful ideas of the way that we can be able to handle the amount of work that we have in a season and how much can be completed. That'll determine the road bond amount. And then there is a larger discussion, longer term, which of course, I really need to spend some time, certainly with the CIP committee, to really engage the CIP process a little bit differently. And what I'm going to suggest is more in the format, Selectmen Schumfeld, of what we did with, for the breakdown of each project in the format that I presented for the update a couple of weeks ago, that can really then be encapsulated into a larger spreadsheet that shows a realistic five-year plan and how are we going to start to pay for these items. So I can tell you, while I don't have a specific dollar amount, it's not going to be something that's going to be exorbitant, that's going to hurt the general fund and all the things that we're working so hard for right now, because that means just as much for me with the staff as it means for you with, with the taxpayer as well, and we want to be responsible in our approach for that.
Thank you for that. So just to kind of sum what we're proposing for this budget is 3.4 million in long-term debt, or total debt is the expectation, which is similar to what we borrowed last year.
Yes.
Then the other 1.7 million for those three items you mentioned, the fire station, the firehouse, as well as the next, the building next door, is not intended to be borrowed, but to be taken out of the following year's free cash, the 1.7 million. So next year's CIP, are we going to start with a much lower number for free cash? Are we going to have a CIP budget in fiscal year '20?
So what I'm going to propose is that we actually start CIP sooner than what we've done in the past, so we can actually start to engage in this process over the summer months and as we're approaching fall. So it would be very fresh, we'll have all of our appropriations from town meeting, we need to rebuild the CIP and actually come up with a funding plan that makes sense.
So you simply want to kind of shift the CIP budgeting to the fall town meeting when the free cash is fresh, if you will, freshly, and I actually think we'll have more than 1.7 million this fall, based on a couple of the one-time, a lot of one-timers we had this year, and John is not shaking his head, but I know he's shaking his head because he doesn't like to talk about free cash before it's certified.
They never do.
They never do, they don't like to.
We've got two months to go in this fiscal year.
Exactly. But we did have a lot of projects that were off the list. Scott, do you remember some of those projects that we had off, like the Salt Shed?
Well, the Salt Shed, it was one that's, we took a look at it, and the more we looked at it, said doing this now is not the right time, it's not the right project. We had discussions about a dog park, which is an interesting discussion, but as our new town manager pointed out, we sort of had the cart before the horse and how we were going about that.
Jay Barrows is going to pay for that, isn't he?
And, you know, when we look at these things, what we're seeing is the benefits of the discipline we've had over the past few years. And the approaches we've taken, our financial discipline, our use of free cash are positioning us to take advantage of the opportunities Kevin's been describing. A couple of years ago, we might not have been able to fully take advantage of these opportunities, and we would, well, I mean, you really can't miss out on the million six, but, I mean, to position ourselves to be able to do that is the result of what we've been doing. Now, and I know, Kevin, you said next year, we're not looking to, but if something else came down the road and the federal government threw out another million and a half, million six to us, we'd want to have that discussion, but because of what we've done, we'd find ourselves in a position that we could discuss it, that we could potentially take advantage of it. And I think that's the message, it's we're reaping the rewards of what we've done. So as long as we sort of stick to the program, we'll position ourselves correctly.
And we do have future needs, I mean, the, the items are off the list, I think there's more than that, there's another fire engine, we have another couple million roads that is definite, I mean, we're not done with our roads quite yet. So I like the fact that we're shifting now, and we're taking advantage of that shift to fund it six months earlier, but we're really not changing too much of our expense dynamic, our, our operating expense dynamic, if you will.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much for doing that research, I thank you very mu, both of you very much, and John for doing that research.
What we're capitalizing on is free money, is when the opportunity is there, don't miss it.
Right, don't let it sit in an account for six months before we can use it, let's Let's do it in October when the money is certified. And I think we'll have a lot more than 1.7, by the way.
Neil, did you, did you have any questions regarding the CIP?
I mean, I know you've already.
I know your word here, so.
I know, and I know you've already been through this. So I'm, just a couple of quick ones, just, and I appreciate, obviously, you guys have already done a lot of work to vet this all out. So I'm not going to go through it line by line. But just a couple of my own education. You mentioned the salt shed. So I see that that's was a request of 600,000 and a small amount was allocated. So what does that money be spent on?
Actually, the 600,000 wouldn't have purchased the whole salt shed. That would have been like an increment, but we took that back. The 26,000 is really work we're going to do for site preparation. That site preparation is going to get that spot, you know, flat and ready. And we're actually going to use it. And even if we never built the salt shed, we could take advantage of that site now for the storage of materials. So it's work that we can do in advance to have it ready. If we go ahead, we'll have done that work and we won't be paying someone else to do it. But if we don't go ahead, we still have a useful property.
Okay. And then I see Route 106 design and oversight. I'm just curious about that because we all travel Route 106 every day. So is there something, some huge improvement planned?
Well, it's, there's an improvement plan that was in place and it was going to be taking place over a number of years. The extra money we're spending is to help advance that and to help bring about three years, Kevin, if I'm not mistaken, to go from like 2023 down to 2000. So by putting in this additional money with the work that the state's already started up to the intersection of, we know, 106 and 140. And this will just help advance it a little bit. And if we put in our part, again, the state, and I don't know if there's any federal money in that, Kevin, you'll have to.
I've got to interrupt this for a second here. Six-thirty public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So you can just have a seat for a few minutes. We'll pick up in a few minutes. And if our trustee clerk could read the hearing notice?
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 15 is amended, the Mansfield Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall, Six Park Row, Mansfield, Massachusetts, on Wednesday, April 25, 2018, at 6:30 PM on the application of Route 106 Wines and Spirits, Inc., John McIntyre, manager, for an alteration of premises for all alcohol retail license at their facility located at 377 Chauncey Street. Anyone interested in or wishing to be heard on said application should appear at the date and time specified. Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, none, motion carries, five-zero. Good evening. If you could come on up and explain to us a little bit about your, your change. Sure. Right up here, you can have a seat.
Let me get him a chair. Oh, we took that chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Stephanie Boudreaux for Jack McIntyre and Route 106 Wine and Spirits. This is Mr. McIntyre.
Good evening.
Hi.
So we are seeking, Mr. McIntyre has a liquor store on Chauncey Street. He's seeking to expand the premises. He has entered a alteration, amendment of the lease with Stop &amp; Shop. And we're just seeking approval.
Are you going next door, they opened, they opened space?
Yes.
Good, business is good.
Yes.
Good.
Need more, need more space for more selection.
There we go. That's a good problem. Is there anything else you want to add before we open up to the selectmen?
I'm sorry?
Pretty, pretty straightforward. Is there anything else you wanted to add? No.
Okay. We'll start with Selectman Ryan.
So you're just expanding into the empty, was it cocoa? That was next door, the, okay. All right. Any other changes we need to be aware of that there's just more space for more merchandise?
Yeah, more merchandise.
Okay. No, no other questions. Thank you.
Selectman Schufeld.
Just a quick question. $2,000, is that the reasonable cost of renovations?
I'm sorry?
Is $2,000 the cost of renovations? What, are you opening a wall or something? Is that?
Yeah, it's, it's not going to be.
Minimal?
Minimal space.
Okay. Nope, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. If that feels too low, believe me, the building department will be telling them.
Don't worry.
Selectman Appley. No, I think it's, you know, I'm glad you're doing well. And I encourage you to stay in town and keep things moving along. So congratulations, I guess.
Thank you.
Good job. Selectman DeVicchio.
Oh, good luck to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For being here.
Have all the route, have all the routing slips, have we heard back from the police department on this? Okay, so any, any motion would have to be, so we'll. Anything you want to add before we close the public hearing?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, good.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, none, motion carries, five-zero. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the alteration of premises application for an all-alcohol retail license for Route 106 Wines and Spirits, John McIntyre, manager, located at 377 Chauncey Street, pending routing through Town Hall Departments and Public Safety.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, none, motion carries, five-zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice day.
If you could introduce yourself, no. This is me.
I just have one more quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm not going to take too long on this. So did I see 200,000 for DPW parking improvements? I'm just curious what that is.
I don't think there is specific parking improvements. That's sort of the parking enterprise fund. John?
Yeah, that was, that was, what they're doing, they're, they're going to be, Lee's going to be going down there and probably around now. We're going to wait until the springtime, take a look at what we needed down there and.
Down where exactly?
Around the, around the train station.
Okay.
The Winthrop Street lot we own, maybe need striping. Striping, signage.
Crack ceiling.
Crack ceiling, trying to get, get rolling on it. It's a, there's a lot of work to be done there. And we're going to try to prioritize the work that's needed.
But there's an enterprise fund for that.
Yes, yeah, there is.
And is there a document, just for my own education or anyone else who might be interested, that describes what these are in more detail that, that's public or?
All the documents that relate to it are technically public. Unfortunately, at this point in time, it's rather unwieldy because it's, it's all paper driven. And I think some of what Kevin was referring to in format changes, we're going to end up next year with sort of a nice book that would be easier to use and for easier for people to look up and see this information. I mean, everything that went through CIP, I mean, all of that information is available to the public. Unfortunately, it's not conveniently so.
Okay.
Personally, I have like a folder like that that's in my briefcase that's.
Yeah, we'll actually have a bounded book next year.
Yeah.
And that we'll actually publish online.
A lot of these things, you just have no idea what they really are.
Of course.
That's one of the improvements we've been, been looking to is not only having the five-year, they were just having the book there. So you know, if you're interested in seeing it, you don't have to rely on your memory. You can take a look or for a member of the public or someone else to say, well, let me, let me see what's going on. And unfortunately, it's not that friendly for that right now.
And you'll like it, Neil, because being on the CIP, every week we got the same packet. Every meeting, the same packet. And when I went through it all, half of it I had to toss or recycle. This approach is going to make it much more convenient, much more brief and probably electronic too, if possible, so.
Well, the, the numbers really need to be integrated electronically because when we make a change, then you know, people have to go back and do a lot. It's sort of cumbersome now, so we're, again, looking to take that next step forward with, you know, with the process, not, not only the work we're doing.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the planning and the discipline, fiscal discipline that Scott was talking about, that, that's been improved upon and built on over the last few years, allows us to be flexible now so that we can take advantage of relatively low interest rates in some cases, of available funds that'll, that'll be here with free cash in the fall and able to move quickly to meet urgent needs.
Yes.
And, and you know, Ralph Waldo Emerson famously said that the consistency is the hobgoblin of little minds. So I don't know if that proves that I don't have, we don't have little minds, but at least that's one piece of evidence that's gone.
Why'd you look at me when you said little minds though?
I just happened to be glancing in that direction.
Take it personally. Okay. Is there anything, Mr. Dumas or Scott, that you want to talk about that? Any issues on the CIP that you want to talk about that people should, at home should know about?
You know what, one that, that really strikes me that I'm very excited about is one of the smaller items. It's the first one on the list. It's $40,000. It's the revamp of our town website. And it's one that excites me a lot. I know if Kevin, you could spend a couple of minutes on it because I think it impacts everyone here and it's going to impact residents.
Sure. I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
It's one of the things that we talked about several months back, actually four months ago already, and about the need for this. And it really is the first time someone's welcomed to our town, you know, to be able to look at what Mansfield's about. And it is certainly needed. We need a refreshed, renewed look in how people use it. It should be easy to use in the things that are most common where people go. That's where we want them to get their information as easy as possible. So whether it be issues of rubbish and recycling or issues on budget or issues of how to pay your bill online or whatever the case is, we want people to get there as quickly as they can and to make sure that it's a consistent theme. It's updated pictures of the town. It's every page that you go to will have the same look, the same feel and the same information, whether it be the hours of the department, the department names and locations and email addresses, and also pertinent things that we have going on in those departments. The nice thing about the homepage will also have the opportunity to be able to have automatic alerts that people will choose to receive on a varied, a myriad of different things, whether it be a water main break or whether there may be a power outage or whether it may be school closures or in the case of a natural disaster or an emergency and we need to get messages out, we can get them via electronic, via email. You can sign up to get them via text message to your cell phone and it'll bring you right to the link to the town website right from your smartphone. Or in the case, this is an extra added benefit, that in the case that there is really a natural emergency, there are probably about 30 or 40 codes of which the municipality has the right to use in certain circumstances that can override. And whether you're signed up to the town or not, we can actually get to your phone. And so if you're pinging off of a certain distance off of that radio tower, you'll actually be able to get that type of message that we have to reach people because in the case of emergency. We don't have a reverse 911 here. We don't have a way to be able to reach out to people. So from on a regular basis, it's great. If you choose to get all the messages, you'll get them all or just the ones that you really care about. It's a great way to be able to get messages back and forth. And the other thing too, for updates, it's very easy without MIS having to update the website for everybody. That'd be very, very easy where people can just be trained and each department can go on and update their information, update their minutes on their own. It'd be a much more user-friendly opportunity for the website and we'll be using that in a different way.
Yeah, that really dovetails into your, your question, your comment. We have a nice book with CIP. That can be right there. That can be right there for all of us to use. It can be right there for the public to see so that people know the transparency is there because we've done a better job accumulating the information and we've done a better job of making it available to people.
Excellent.
Can I just comment one thing? We, I know I just gave it to you last night. I don't know if you gentlemen may have seen it in the Beacon. There was a story about North Andover has created a, a mobile app for their town. So I was asking Kevin if that might be something that could be possibly incorporated into this project as an app for the town website. Because you know, who knows, 10 years from now, websites could be obsolete, the way things are moving so quickly.
Us old people need the big screens.
Yeah, I know.
We can't carry around telephones.
Exactly. So in North Andover, you know, they have a photo of the app and it looks very user-friendly. So I would encourage us to explore that possibility.
Excellent. All right. Anybody else have any further questions or?
I handed that to them two weeks ago when we were live in person, but.
I gave it to them last night.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve the capital? I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, none, motion carries. Thank you once again. Congratulations for a good year on Capitol. Next, we have budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before you go.
I'm ready.
Go into it. You know, what we're, we're talking about, I think, is from a high level, not getting into how many paper clips we're buying this year, more, more of any new positions, the, the big cost centers, whether they're DPW, police, fire. You know, not that we're buying, you know, five more paper clips with the border health or something to that effect. So we're trying to kind of limit it to the major cost items, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. And as you have in front of you this evening, I prepared a packet of information for you. Their numbers are items. So as I go through, I'll be referencing the attachments and what item numbers they are. But certainly, Bill, thank you for the opportunity to be able to be here with you. And also a much-needed thanks to certainly the members of FinCom and Chairman Walter Wilk and the CIPC Committee for their assistance certainly during the budget process. And also for all of our town department heads and also for our school superintendent. Much thanks for the time that they took with me and took with Director Stanbrook and really taking the time to dig in and not just presenting the information, but also trying to be able to give us the understanding of what it is, the challenges that they have and why they've requested certain things. And that's very, very helpful for someone like me coming in new that hasn't gone through that process with them before. And they all did a really amazing job and I'm very thankful for that. And as you recall, as we started off this process back in January, we were 2.34 million in, as a shortfall. And again, everyone's to be commended for all the help that it took to get to this point in time where we're actually responsibly balanced for fiscal year 2019. And the fact that we're focused a lot on what we'll call tier one. And tier one needs, those things are certainly the most pressing needs and really the things that couldn't be pushed off any further. As we continue to looking at how we're going to develop the tier-two needs, those things that aren't urgent today, but certainly that are in essence actually needed. But then we'll be working on tier three, which are certainly the future goals moving forward. But for now, we were able to address tier one and we'll get into that in just a moment. And certainly for this evening, our discussion surrounding the balanced budget of 96 million, $348, 96 million, $348,301. And that's seen in your exhibit number one tonight. And so what you have built in exhibit one for your review that consists of all the revenue and expense summaries and by category and also has the breakdown of those in the Article One format for town meeting. So you'll be able to go through all of those. And also for our highlights of this budget, one of the things I had mentioned to you back in January that it certainly was my goal in order not to use free cash in order to sustain the fiscal 2019 budget. And that was a major accomplishment this year. Another major accomplishment is that this was not only that there were no staff reductions in fiscal 2019, but the fact that there was growth and we'll get into that in just a moment. Another highlight is the fact that all of our union contracts that were up are fully funded in fiscal 2019. So we don't have a liability there. And all the contracts that were expired are currently settled as of this evening. We made adjustments in local receipts to reflect actual activity in all of the categories in eliminating those type of one-time occurrences, to making sure that we're being prudent in our estimate approach. Making sure that we're taking all of our staff and aligning them to the proper classifications and making sure that we're paying people correctly and in the correct pay grades. And there are limited full-time equivalent adjustments. And again, this is where we're talking tier one, those most pressing needs of our goals and not being stagnant, but trying to address some of these things. So those things are first, it's the first year of the implementation of the approved five-year department plan for the fire department. And this adds one person beginning half a year, which will be January 2019. And the goal of that plan, if you recall, is that over a period of time and having the proper staff, that we'll be able to, not only to be responding to the adequate calls that we need to, actually making additional dollars via ambulance revenue, but also being able to cut back on the amount of overtime that we're currently paying for constantly backfilling positions as Chief Boldigini had mentioned back, well, a little over a year and a half ago when he did his presentation. This budget also includes a second SRO position. And for people who don't know what that is, it's a school resource officer. This is in addition to Kenny who's over in our school system now. And this position was added in fiscal 2019 and at the collaboration and working with the school department. So there was some realigning of salaries that they had on their side. They felt that this was important and working with Chief Salon. And so this has been added. They will be covering the cost of that in fiscal 2019.
Fully?
Fully. There's also the addition of an assistant town engineer. It was very clear in meeting with DPW, with our assistant director and town engineer, Rick Alves, with Lee Azanara, that there is a current backlog. And at one time, there was an addition position full-time. And with the amount of work that needs to be done across water, sewer and townwide as it relates to the designing and engineering that needs to be done, these things simply cannot be done within the timeframe that's allocated and especially with the aggressive schedule that we have moving forward. So what this is, is that in fiscal 2019, this does not impact the general fund, but by the amount of work that's been assigned for fiscal '19 and what is determined to be done, that this is allocated 70% for water, for the water enterprise fund and 30% for the sewer enterprise fund for the related work that that person would be doing in fiscal 2019. This also includes two skilled DPW staff that there would be covered 90% sewer and 10% in the general fund for fiscal 2019. And I'd like to talk a little bit about that because one of the things that we have as a problem is first of all, not being able to get to routine maintenance that we need to do in town and that we're constantly challenged and falling behind. In addition to the fact that we're not maintaining our sewer lines in town, which is an issue. So those things, if we don't maintain them, we've probably experienced, just since I've been here alone, been here alone, four backups of, that we've had as liability issues in town. Some of them have been repeat backups, and it just exemplifies the problem that if we're not maintaining and jet-rotting and cleaning the lines on a regular basis and coming up with a program to do that, that we'll continue to have issues moving forward in the future. So this allows us to start to do that and something that's terribly needed that we just don't have the staff to do simply today, but that is an urgent need.
Will they be using the Vacta truck?
That would be. They'll be using the Vacta truck, they'll be jetlining, cleaning lines, inspecting the sewer lines. Believe it or not, nine times out of 10 on all your main thoroughfares in your larger-sized sewer mains, you can pre-see a problem coming. You can actually see things that are happening with fats, oils, and greases. You can see what's happening if, believe it, it's what happens. And you can actually see levels rising higher than they should in the mains. So being able to inspect them, if there are issues, that they have to be cleaned and jet-rodded, especially in areas where there's restaurants with high levels of grease, that certainly will help us, and that's part of the job of what they will be doing. Using the Vacta truck for two purposes, not just for the issues of cleaning and maintaining the sewer lines, once you bleach out the hoses and clean them appropriately, we need to get that truck also back in use to be cleaning catch basins and jet-rotting lines on a high-pressure volume basis that a jet-rodder simply can't do. I have one in the neighborhood now that I have to wait till July until the vehicle, the Vacta truck, is fixed. But that is something that will be up and running as a part of this process. But that's something certainly that we terribly need. It's also included in the DPW Department, we created central fleet maintenance. This is the addition, they requested two skilled mechanics. I only approved one skilled mechanic in addition to their current staffing levels to be able to take on central fleet maintenance. I certainly think that you can understand that when we don't have one depository of information and quality control over all of our vehicles and apparatus, it presents a challenging maintenance issue for us. Probably the most challenging that I can tell you about is the issues that we experienced in the fire department. It's not like a simple truck or a simple car. There are large pieces of apparatus that currently, in the old DPW facility, we would never have the ability to maintain a piece of equipment like that. However, our staff are currently getting certified for the proper certifications to work on the braking systems and other pieces of responding for emergency technicians for this type of piece of equipment. And the fact that our new DPW facility was built with the proper high lift pumps and lifts to be able to work on this type of equipment. And so we experienced a couple of things. One, we save on downtime. Today alone, we have two of our main engines completely out of service as of today. I'm hoping to have one back tomorrow and maybe one back by Monday. But when we actually have to take a paid staff member of the Mansfield Fire Department and drive that vehicle to a place to be fixed and then have another person go and pick them up and bring them back, we're experiencing, A, that downtime of our employees and sometimes having to backfill depending on where it needs to go with overtime. We're also not maintaining the vehicle the way that we really should be. And when we're dealing with a cost of Engine Four alone at $660,000 or the ladder truck coming up in a few years at $1.2 million, these types of apparatus should have the best maintenance being done on them, certified logs for every single piece of equipment and all the vehicles in town. But fire has me most concerned out of all of them, strictly just because of the cost of them alone and, of course, of the downtime. But this brings it all in-house, one place, have it done, turn around, get it back on the road as quickly as we can, and having the staff trained as that we need to. We are able to do that with only adding one person, and that is borne by the general fund in fiscal 2019. You will also notice there are a couple of position shifts to grants or revolving funds. So in the Council on Aging, there are four time, four part-time positions that have been shifted from the general fund to grants. And so there are multi-year grants that are out there that have not been materialized for the point that they were being used. So since they are multi-year grants, we've shifted four part-time positions to those grants for fiscal 2019. And certainly knowing that we have to depend on that with Deb for the work that we do for the COA, those positions are important to us. Want to make sure it just wasn't for one year, but we have the ability for multi-years on those grants. And in the addition, Park and Rec had asked to come off of using the revolving fund for a portion of their salaries. I recommended that it stays put, and the way that it stays as current would be two-thirds to the general fund and one-third to the revolving fund. And from Mass General Law, the appropriate split of the benefits will also be done to the general fund and to the revolving fund for fiscal 19. Another item of note, that it wasn't an addition, but rather a shift, was hiring a human resource generalist versus the human resource director. The dollars are already in the fiscal 18 budget. They've been reduced for the fiscal 19 budget because it's less expensive for a generalist. But the thought process behind it is that there's an enormous amount of work since a position was vacated that falls strictly directly upon Nancy Griffin in my office and that there are larger issues of no one overseeing and maintaining the town's health insurance plan, the town's dental plan, the correct FMLA, and workers' compensation, all major, large cost factors in our budget. And someone needs to be making sure that we're following those rules and regulations, that we're working on trying to keep costs down and to try to be able to make sure that we have a responsible person who's responding to the workforce with issues that do come up, issues that shouldn't come just directly to me, but an interim step. And to be able to have an office that's in a safe, safe environment for people to do so is truly, truly, truly needed. In addition to the required paperwork, new changes of law, there's a new pregnancy requirement and a new law that has come out that we just went through and had to roll out. Nancy was gracious enough to help with that and get that rolled out. But different changes in law and policies and procedures. We need to engage in a correct employee manual and to be bargaining correctly with the unions. We need to get that out there and work on a proper classification system. So we need this type of person to be able to help in the more generalist terms. The larger, of course, issues we've talked about and that those issues I feel very comfortable in doing, that I've always done and I will continue to do in dealing and being the decision-maker, handling those larger-term issues, I will work with the human resource generalist with that. But this is an interim position between an HR Director and a generalist, but certainly being able to fulfill the real, true needs that we do have and that are experiencing here on a daily basis. Also here to note, under the education section for our schools, this allows in fiscal 19 our new elementary reading program and revised math materials, also for improvements to school safety and security, and also improvements in the area of technology and Chromebooks for fiscal 2019 of areas to be able to note. I mentioned the introduction of the central fleet maintenance. And again, that the proper equipment, the high lift equipment is there to handle the vehicles and apparatus, and it's our goal to have that central depository and tracking of all the information and maintenance and repairs of the town's fleets of vehicles, trucks, and apparatus. And again, the costly outsourced repairs can be done by our certified technicians, saving time out of service and hopefully extending the useful life of all of our vehicles, of our fleet. Another highlight of this is that capital's been moved out of the operating budget. It is in CIP, and those changes were made and approved by your honorable body this evening. And also the work that's been done before my arrival, but that led to only a 5% cost increase and a 5% cost avoidance by leaving SMHG and going to Maya for our health insurance coverage, still having the same level of coverage for our staff and for our retirees, but also being able to avoid that 5% extra cost, and that begins in July 1, 2018. And also the work, thanks to our collective treasurer, Jackie did a wonderful job in being able to quote our dental plans. So we were going to receive a 12% increase effective July 1, and we have a 0% increase July 1, 0% increase the following July 1, and in the third year, we would have an 8% increase. And that's effective July 1. We are switching from Delta Dental to our new plan, again, offering the same services to our employees effective for July 1, 2018. Planned retirements, instead of funding them in the...
Have to go to the unions?
I'm sorry?
Does that change of dental coverage have to go to the union?
No, as long as...
Provider, I'm sorry.
The providers know, just that we provide the same Tier Four coverage for dental and the same thing on the health side as well. Planned retirements, instead of paying the compensated absences from within the budget, we have a trust for that, and those were moved and those appropriations will come from there, if they're not in the budget. Noteworthy that the schools, in cooperation with all of our departments, they participated in $265,000 worth of reductions to make this budget balanced for them and for us. Also to note that we're going self-insured for workers' compensation, which is different, that helps save a significant amount of money and really helped us close the budget gap. Currently, we were paying over $470,000 a year for full premium workers' compensation coverage. So we've worked really hard and we've going to use Cook &amp; Company as our...
That was mega.
It was mega. They were served with the proper notice. Cook &amp; Company has been served with the notice that we'll be signing up with them, and they provide the same type of service to us for far, far, far less cost and that we do take on the responsibility that we have certain claim, we need to pay those claims. We have made sure that we have several hundred thousand that are set aside for that, but we saved over $100,000 by doing that and protecting the town against some liability.
Do you ever get lost on that too?
I'm sorry?
I forget, we have a major problem?
There is, and so there's a self-insured excess workers' compensation policy through FB Insure that we've engaged in.
That's part of the cost of the...
It is, and we've set aside those dollars for that, and that's going to be able to, anything greater than $500,000 would be covered excess in perpetuity for that type of loss. We've also made the change effective also for 2019 for the way that we handle police and fire 111F claims. So it's workers' compensation, but in the police and fire world, which isn't treated exactly the same. We had an insurance policy before that anything over, it only limited us to pay payments to $100,000. And now with this coverage, it will provide coverage for just $9,000 more, up to $500,000 worth of coverage per person, per claim. So that's something that also will save us an additional liability moving forward. Attachment Two, that I handed out tonight in your packet, is the use of free cash. And so as you'll see, the current certified amount of free cash is $2,649,571. And again, there is no use of that for the budget, but that is going to fund snow and ice deficit. It's going to meet our 5% goal, which I'm really proud of and the whole team is proud of, of our goal for stabilization funding. It also funds the $1.7 million in the town's capital improvement plan pending the vote that will go through at town meeting. And of course, the 111F trust funding for those compensated absences that we talked about. And then also for the fact that the general fund has some unpaid bills as of just this, yesterday, on April 24th, of just shy about $5,000, and that would fully use the amount of free cash as we have proposed for fiscal year 2019.
That $1.7 is what we really voted on a little earlier, right? The three items?
Yes. Actually, no, no. This is actual cash. So if I may flip to that, if you don't mind. If you would like to skip forward to attachment number five, and that is the detailed vote of the CIP. And if you go to the last page of that, you will see down the bottom that it has anything coming from the operating budget, from free cash, from the retained earnings of the enterprise funds, article term backs, long-term debt, and short-term debt or free cash payoff. That $1.7 specifically is listed on page one, and it starts with the town website. It has to do with the update to the Vision Eight assessing software. It has to do with the host upgrades that are required in MIS for our exchange server. It has to do with the equipment trailer for the town clerk. It's going to replace the chiller, the HVAC chiller here in this building at Town Hall, and it goes to a pickup truck for DPW as well. In addition to multiple things for the police department, for the training range improvements, the Tahoe replacement, the 15 tasers, the forensic software, and the dollars that we're setting aside of $60,000, not that we're upgrading our radio system, but we need to have funds set aside if something happens between today and the point that we actually move to Semrec into our new facility, also on June 30th from a year from now, we need dollars to repair and get the system back up and running temporarily. In addition, it has to do with a non-vehicle equipment replacement in the fire department. It has a wide variety of things for the school department, for a generator at Jordan Jackson, from seal coating driveways and roads in the school system, for the chairlift that needs to be installed at Quarters Middle School, a plowchark replacement, a district-wide sped minibus. It has district-wide technology improvements, and it also has needed repaving at Jordan Jackson and Robinson parking lots. If you've been there recently, you can see how difficult it is and how bad of a condition it is. In addition to the Mansfield High School bleacher system, and that matches some existing cash that they have in order to get the project on this summer. In addition to the point of the Route 106 design and oversight and the dump truck for highway, that comes to the total of the $1.7 million. So this is out of existing free cash that we have today to clear up all of these items. The $1.68 million will be coming from the fall free cash when it's certified, not this existing free cash. So we're going to have the short-term authorization now, but it won't even impact the budget because we're not going to borrow it. It's just to get the work done, and we're going to pay it off in the fall when our new free cash is certified.
I'm good.
Excuse me. The next portion is the breakdown of the approval of the Hance revenues. This is, this is item number three in your packet. It's the one that's colorful, so you...
Oh, great.
Pops right out. I'm going to ask you, go through.
Neil, they spent a lot of money on this thing, buddy.
These with time. It's multi-pages, and it lists out for you. And I tried a format that I thought would be helpful. And I color-coded the front first portion. The first portion's dealing with recycling fees. It has the current fee, the proposed fee, and this increase in all of the fees bring forward over half a million dollars in needed revenue to balance the fiscal 2019 budget. So John, I'm going to have you go through this.
Before people at home have a heart attack, let's make sure we understand, when we say recycling fees, we're talking about extra carts, bulk items, stickers.
Old sofas you leave out.
Not curbside pickup.
Not your trash.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure people knew that because there's probably people jumping out of their chairs already.
Yeah, on the recycling fees, it's not the recycling pickup. It's things that, that you can either, you know, dump off at the green and you charge the fee and the stickers themselves. For example, extra carts, the, right now, they're $200, and we're proposing to go to $250 on that. Bulky items you can drop...
Is that every year or once they pay it?
They pay it every year.
So what happens if we, I get a new cart and then I don't pay it the next year, we come and take it?
We bill you for it, and if you don't pay it, then we do our normal collections.
So the guy with the truck will know that you didn't pay?
I don't know.
Because I'm being picky, but...
We bill you for it. If you don't pay it, then we come, we do our normal collections like we do with anything else when you don't pay. Do we come and take it? I usually...
Because if they're going to take the trash anyway, no one will pay it, once they have it the first year.
But it's also something that'll be, you can lean the property.
Yes.
Just asking.
Yeah. And I'm just answering.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good work.
Keep going, John.
Okay, thank you. The white goods, right now, the fee is $20, and the new fee proposed is $25. And the green stickers themselves, the fee right now for a green sticker is $10, and the proposal is to go to $20. Those are recycling fees. The other revenues, municipal lien certificates, right now, they're $25. The proposal is to go to $50. And those are things that people get, everyone knows what a municipal lien certificate is, I guess.
Actually, they take a lot. That's fair because this work that has been done, the treasurer has to go and make sure, you know, the taxes are paid and what, all the, I mean, it's not like two minutes you print it out.
The treasurer collected it...
Yeah, I think most towns are at 50 or more already.
This is, we are low in this area, and she did some research that proves that.
And they pay it anyway, they're doing a closing, they'll pay it.
Ambulance fees, those are the ones in green, and they're just the, the, right now, we're at Medicare plus 150%. The proposal is to go to Medicare plus 300%. And that's, and again, with the assumptions there, that it's a 64% collection rate. This is from ComStar, our ambulance billing company came up with these assumptions. Sorry, go ahead.
John, so you mean that's four times Medicare or Medicare, three times Medicare?
It's...
Medicare plus 300% of Medicare would be four times Medicare.
Then I guess that would be, yes.
That would it?
It's Medicare plus three, yes.
And, and these other numbers here, like extra carts, bulky, and whatever, did you assume that the same count would be there, or did you assume that some of it would drop because people might not buy a sticker if it was 20 bucks versus 10 bucks?
We did, we assumed the same, yes.
That's fine.
That they weren't so large that someone wouldn't do...
I mean, you could spend more time analyzing that.
Yeah, it's not worth the dollars, the nickels and dimes, it's fine. We've spent enough time on it, that's okay.
And it's important to note that people who are 65 and older still get that free. So today, the Mansfield green stickers. So please know that even though there's an increase for everyone else, that still remains free for 65 and over.
Just for the stickers, not for the carts and the other stickers.
Frank's getting close.
Moving on to the yellow part, that's the parking fees part. The proposal right now for resident parking fees, right now, it's $2, and the proposal is to go to $3, and then in the yellow is a breakdown of how we came up with the amounts of what that would generate in revenue. And that went into the budget. Oh, no, okay, thank you. Again, there's the, depending on when the MBTA finishes their, their, their project, I think we assume that it would be in December. Yeah, whether that, yeah, that's where we are right now, is that they'll be done by December. So we split it for the spaces and the days for half the year, and then the, you know, the full amount of spaces for the rest of the year. So if you look there, right now, we're at $369,720 for revenue. And then next year, if we went to $3, we would generate $230,490 in the first six months of the year, $282,000 in the second month of the year, depending on these assumptions. The difference would be $143,000. And the thinking there is, right now, we've been putting $125, in fiscal year 18, we put $125,000 of retained earnings into the parking budget. And retained earnings is the, is the enterprise fund term for essentially free cash. What general fund free cash is, retained earnings is for enterprise funds. So it's like we're putting, we're putting free cash in... It's like we're taking the free cash out of the, of the parking budget, in essence. There's still $25,000 left because we're not sure, we want to have a little bit of wiggle room on the, on the, on the rates because we're not sure whether this will happen or not. So we're putting $25,000 in retained earnings, but the thinking is to get it completely out and let, let the parking enterprise start building again and not take the one-time revenue to balance the budget.
Are we, I've been running down questions as we go along, waiting to the end of the presentation. Are we supposed to do that, or are we just interjecting? Are, are we supposed to do that or are we just interjecting now as?
You can, you can interject.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you.
I kind of half asked you.
I'd like to interject too.
I, just an observation regarding the, well, first of all, the Mansfield green stickers. There is any increase there, but aren't those free to seniors?
Yes.
Very good. As regards the parking free fees, I'll just make a general observation. I don't think it's controversial. I think before we look at increasing fees or as we look at increasing fees for parking, we have to look at improving the condition of the parking situation. And also coming up with, with longer-term solutions to, to parking and, and use of that entire area. And I think everyone on this board has at one point or another stated similar sentiments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Here, here.
Any further questions or? We have to vote on the three dollars at some point to get people to notice. Because we can't do it next week. We got to do it out this, we should do it like real soon.
I did have some questions and comments on the budget, but maybe we can go back to those.
You have any?
That was it, just on the three dollar thing.
You guys have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can I just ask on the, the parking fees? So are we taking money out of the enterprise fund and putting it into the general fund? Is that what you said? No?
Well, what we have been doing is we've been subsidizing the parking budget by retained earnings. And we've used so much of it that we no longer have a hundred and twenty-five dollars, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to be able to attribute to make the budget work for fiscal two thousand and nineteen. So we can't cut the budget, so we can only supplant it by increasing the rate. What we did do earlier tonight was to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to making improvements in the parking facilities that Director Stanbrook was mentioning. So the striping, seal coating, all the signage and things like that, those are the things that we will be doing. And we'll be getting on board as soon as those dollars are approved. Until then, we can't make those improvements. We need the dollars to do it. That's what that two hundred thousand was for. This is strictly saying that instead of using a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from retained earnings, as you'll see on this spreadsheet that was just circulated, you'll see that the amount in fiscal two thousand and eighteen, it had retained earnings at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Is only use of twenty-five thousand of retained earnings. We're coming off of the subsidy because we just don't, we will not consistently have a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of money to allocate to this anymore because it doesn't exist.
Yeah, I just, is there a way, I'm wondering, I see, you know, proposed three dollars for residents and, and MBTA, do we have any say over that amount?
Nope.
The four dollars?
Never have.
We do not.
I would just.
It was three before they went down to two, correct?
No, we were at the town.
We're at four.
We were at four.
We were at four in the.
The town itself, their, their fee was four and went down to two?
Correct. They were all four. We went to two.
Okay.
I would just like to go on record as staying that if there's a way we can not increase that fee. I would really like to, I would favor that because I just feel like the commuters are just getting slammed. And the, the MBTA is probably going to raise their fares again and it's just, it's just getting so expensive.
You know what, Neil? I would agree with that. The issue is, is we've been trying to get a contract with the T for, ever since I've been on this board. So, I mean, there's, with, there's a lot of stuff that we're doing, I know we're doing for those lots, that we're not being recompensed for. There's no way, right? Who standings, in the winter time, who's shoveling all that stuff? We are.
Yes.
Why?
There's a deal.
Like I said, that deal.
We met several times.
The typewriter deal.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have a guest in the audience who was on this board way before I was and she would probably concur that that thing was on a typewriter. And we've been trying to get that redone. And to Selectman Ryan's concern, if we were able to get that done and the costs were properly allocated to who owns what we're doing, then maybe we wouldn't have to do that.
Yeah, I just, I just.
You know what I'm saying?
It's, it's a, it's a big expense to commute and.
It's twenty bucks a day to go in and take the train.
Twenty-three with the parking. Well, with the now, three dollars. Twenty-two now, soon to be twenty-three if we go with this.
Selectman DeVaca.
As, as someone who relatively frequently commutes to Boston using the commuter rail and my wife does every day, I, I agree with Selectman Ryan's sentiment. However, the way, the, the way the, it's, this is set up now, if there's not enough money in the parking fund to, to fund the improvements and, and the costs, it would have to come from the general fund. So everyone will be paying that. People who don't even use the commuter rail will be paying that. So it's, it's a sorry state of affairs.
It'd be like we were subsidizing stations, what we've been doing.
If you don't have sewer, you pay for sewer.
We, we have to think about outside the box and I, I thank Mr. Aptwits for bringing up the MBTA. Maybe there's something we can do about, about that.
There is no hurry. We had a meeting with them.
This has gone thirty-eight years. There is no hurry.
I'm not looking, I'm not looking to pay more for, for parking either, so.
We had a meeting in, in November, December and they, they were two younger gentlemen who that just didn't seem like, yeah, they just didn't seem like they were in a hurry to do anything.
Couldn't outlive you.
Yeah, that's pretty much what that.
You went into Boston, there's always so much, I mean, what are you going to do? Knock them over the head? They don't want to come to the table? They don't want to come to the table? What are you going to do? But we could keep pressing them and pay them for the spots that we're getting paid for. And that gets the answer.
The two hundred thousand are going to spend, what, what is that going to, you said, striping, like what, is it going to be a vastly improved experience, parking at the train station?
I don't think any parking experience is a, is a fun one for sure, but at least it has to do with striping, has to do with the pavement management. Potholes, we have to cut things out and be able to put things together, crack sealing, some landscaping improvements so that this stuff that we, that we really need to get to.
What's, one's town, town meeting is over. I know you get, you, you're just wrapping up contracts.
Yes.
We got town meeting next. Could you kind of set that as a priority to?
I will.
And I would love to go back in. I know it was, last time it was Lee, was Lee? Myself and John. We could, the four of us could try to strong-arm. I mean, we got there essentially the last time because we actually retained, we weren't paying them the amount that they were used to because we were.
That's how we got their attention.
And that got their attention.
Right.
That was the only reason.
I'll go.
And that was the most ridiculous thing that we were doing for, I don't, I'll live it alone, but. That's taking attention. Money talks.
Thanks. Just to kind of sum up a couple of things, and I agree with Selectman DeVaca, we need to start investing in this area, including just more than striping and more than landscaping, but thinking outside the box as we have as a board before. Adding to the four hundred and thirty-eight spots we have there and maybe reducing some of the non-residential spaces we have there as an offset. But the intent here is to use, truly shore up the enterprise fund. Sure, it can, it can be there for us, not just to subsidize what the MBTA does, but to truly have something that could improve the area going forward rather than continue to watch it decay, decay and decay every year.
Exactly.
Yes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And just to note, the remaining pages of this document represent seventy thousand dollars worth of revenue. And this is a new structure of calculating all of the building, mechanical, electrical permitting. The building inspector took a lot of time to go through and to make his process more simple, more streamlined. And this will make it much more easier, certainly for him, but increased revenue as, these are all by surrounding communities as well. So they're broken out by category and that was all part of the five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred thirty-nine, six hundred thirty-one dollars worth of revenue. I wanted to make sure that we went over that today.
Just to jump in, that at some point, these are fees that the board of selectmen set. So you'll have to vote on these, obviously not tonight, but at some point. To, to make them.
I believe on, was it May ninth, we were looking at the water and sewer rates or maybe it's just water rates?
Yes.
What's that? Do it all that night? Does that sound good? You guys want to kind of vote those all at that point?
That's the day after the election, right?
That is correct, on the night.
And we can get some more support behind it too if we need to before that.
Also, moving for attachment number four, just to highlight, this has been updated as of yesterday. And the fact is that all, to Scott's point from earlier this evening, FinCom, all of our goals have been met except just shy of one, which we're going to hit after we close out this budget in June thirtieth. And it's the percentage of free cash to budget. We're just shy of three percent. We're at two point eight five. But other than that, it is very important to note that all those goals met and policies that we've set out to do, that we've hit them all in just shy of one and we will hit that effective June thirtieth. So that's to be commendable for everybody and for the policies that have been followed. Yes.
So, Mr. Dimas, you, because of the free cash, we're going to have this coming year because of lots of one-timers, we're going to hit that easily in the coming fiscal year.
Hopefully.
Well, we've got a lot of good one-timers coming through free cash this coming year. And so our, our goal is to have a sustainable three percent time and time and time again. So when you look at this budget with respect to revenues, and I appreciate your conservatism in those revenue projections, I think that's great. It sounds like that's only going to go up, ignoring the one-timers, that's only going to go up in fiscal year nineteen as well.
Yes, and we have to be able to make sure that we, we have a place to go. And as I explained to you, all of you before, we're really tight. And so there isn't a lot of flexibility, quite frankly, at all. And in order to have the proper reserves, if something happens, a place to go where we could actually have access to dollars, that doesn't exist here today and this will only help us get to that point.
Yeah, this is really the true success story of the past seven years, going from nothing like this at all to meeting these targets is phenomenal.
We've already highlighted and we went over number five, which was the CIP, which is a total for ten point five million. We broke out the different allocations, one point seven million in free cash, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand from retained earnings from sewer, water, airport and DPW parking. A hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred from article turnbacks. Two point two million from the Mansfield Municipal Electric Light Department from their retained earnings. And then the only other things that were out there were for what we have put for long-term debt. And for the long-term debt sections with the two million for the road bond, the one point four million for the one oh six underpass, which matches that federal grant we talked about. Five hundred thousand for the Albertini well transmission main that's needed and that's coming from the water enterprise fund through the rate. And then the plan that we put forth tonight for the one point six eight million for engine four, Memorial Hall and Plymouth Street Fire Station improvements, we will seek the authorization at town meeting, but that we will be paying that off and not using it in the fall. And that the short-term borrowing, again, has no impact on nineteen or beyond. And it's not in our intention to borrow in fiscal two thousand and twenty unless there really is some emergent issue that arises. And that completes the presentation.
Do you feel comfortable with all your numbers that you want us to vote on the, the budget number tonight?
Sure, I'm, I'm that confident. John, I've gone over this multiple, multiple times.
Anybody have any questions? Any further questions?
Yeah. Just a couple of, just a couple of like, I made a promise I wasn't going to get into the weeds, so I won't. I like the fact about the HR person, we had a person here and to get, it's not really adding a new FTE, it's kind of getting someone in here to, just the paperwork in itself is large, so that needs to be dealt with. I, I did, for full disclosure, I did talk to Kevin a little bit about the, I was concerned about the mechanics, mechanic thing and, you know, I guess my, just my general comment is, you know, the one thing that we, it's, it, and it's kind of hard to put it in the analysis because it really, it's a number that you really don't know what it is, but, you know, down the road, their legacy costs. You know, there's pensions, there's OPEB, you know, we're adding people to, to, to a, you know, a number of FTEs that we have. Whatever we have now, we're going to have more. You know, that being said, you know, it is very expensive to send stuff out and have a lot of the work done in the, in the open market because, you know, they just charge you what they charge you and it's, it gets to be expensive. So, you know, I, I guess my concern is that, you know, you hire one person, you know, and all the, you know, they get so many sick days, vacation days, personal days. It seems to me like, believe me, I'm not one to hire two people, but it seems like they might not be here, they'll be out a lot when we might have to have work done. So we're still going to have to wind up sending stuff out. Okay? So, you know, again, everybody knows how I am with budgets. I'm really not a big fan of adding FTEs. And I think, you know, I'm concerned about, I looked at the numbers, the overall budget, you know, the chapter seventy numbers from the state are really not increasing. In fact, our head counts are down. I'm just concerned that we're adding to a pot that it might be unsustainable. You know, again, just a general overall thought. And the other thing is too, we did, I believe, what we, you know, when the project was sold to the residents by some FinCom people in previous administration, that it was told that, you know, in these doublings, there will not be any additional FTEs. And now we're having an FTE, now we're adding people. So it might, you know, there could be perception issues. Again, I'm not fine, I think it's a great analysis. Again, I'm just, I have some concerns and, you know, I tell you like it is, I'm not getting into the weeds of paper clips.
Can I, can I expand on that a little bit? I, I understand, I understand Jess's concerns and, and I do too, a little bit. You have, you can't really quantify how much we're saving as far as downtime. Somebody driving, somebody there. I think what I'd like to do is that next year, we're looking at what's the budget that we're spending sending stuff out? Is it the same? Then, then absolutely that person is not paying for themselves.
But they're already here then.
Doesn't matter. Position's only there if it's funded.
That's.
And what I would also be, you know, wondering about is there's going to be things, if it's like, say, the fire equipment, they're only going to be certified to do X amount of types of things on the equipment. And we're still going to be sending that out to specialty places, so. I, I do have some concerns about that, but I would be willing to give it a shot and take a look at what the, you know, what our invoices are going to be next year for stuff that we sent out compared to this fiscal year that we're in.
And again, I mean, we have a beautiful building, we have that beautiful seventy-five thousand pound lifters, I think, I don't know what they call it, but. Yeah, you know, you want to, let's try and maximize what we've done and that part I get. I just, you know, there was a promise made to the residents about not adding people. And that's all. I mean, that was a fact. It was stated by several people. And, you know, now we're adding people. Again, I'm not saying I'm not, I'm not in favor of it because there are definitely positives to it, like you said. But again, we have to keep our eyes on the pot. I mean, you know, what happens if the, you know, the chapter seventy numbers start getting redone? I mean, that all gets thrown to the pool and we have less kids in the schools, we could be getting less money and then we could have other issues. So we got to keep our eye on that and that's all I'm going to say.
I don't have a speech, I have a few comments. Oh, it was not just him. I, just a, a few notes I made as we went along. The first thing, when we were talking about revenues, I'll, I'll note that more realistically projecting local receipts will have a positive impact on free cash to, to begin with. But, but eventually free cash is just something else that the taxpayers have paid for. It's the money that hasn't been spent that we accumulate. So we should remain cognizant of that. I, I noticed with the, I, I share the concern about legacy costs and, you know, the resiliency of the budget going forward. I, I know we're starting with the fire department this year and I'm going to make this, this brilliant observation that a half-year salary this coming fiscal year will then become a full-year salary. The next year will have double the impact plus whatever the percentage is increased. Plus plans to add another, I guess at that point, half a position, which will then again become a full position. So the, the, my colleagues' concerns are, are not, you know, without merit. Regarding the assistant town engineer, Kevin, you said that'll be paid seventy percent from water, thirty percent from sewer. That generally means, that means that those costs will be coming, I'll be paying those from my left pocket rather than, than my right.
That sounds like me.
Yeah. I'm not paying it, can I pay it from your left pocket? And I'm just wondering, but although I understand, I, I am concerned about the impact on, on, on the general fund also. Do you foresee that being maintained within, enough work being maintained within the enterprise funds to cover?
The work that we've identified for fiscal nineteen, that's how we developed the split between seventy, thirty. And then one of the things that we talked about is that for that and others, we need to look at the split and the workload every year. So it's its own indirect, if whoever you plan on doing the work for and what we can try to allocate to a best variability, that's where it should be assessed.
Okay, so there is some possibility that some costs might accrue to the general fund in the future. And to echo Mr. Trowbridge's statements, to go back to the fire department, I think it will be of interest, I think it would be prudent to have some kind of, at least very general overtime study to see what the impact of overtime is. You know, hopefully it'll be reduced by additional people. And, and, you know, the proof of the pudding is when we actually have the people on board and we see what our experience is and adjust for any extraneous factors. The, the skilled workers in DPW, ninety percent. The, the skilled workers in DPW, ninety percent sewer, ten percent general fund, is that a breakdown that you see through the future?
Yes.
Okay, so more, more or less that breakdown, it's not going to become a hundred percent general fund at any point.
No, no, no.
Again, it's still a cost to the people of Mansfield, but there's also the secondary concern about the impact on the general fund and tying our hands in terms of other services. And I agree with everyone else, I, I like the, the move you've made in terms of HR. It's actually less cost than it had been in the past, and based on my experience anyway, it should be more fruitful. And in general, I'm, despite these comments, I'm excited about the fresh look you and John have given to the budget. And it seems like we're past the kind of inertia we had for a few years. And thanks for taking a very thorough look at this and presenting something for us to think about. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Selectman Schutfeld.
Thank you, and I'll echo Selectman Delvecchio's comments there, I think. I wrote down twenty-eight things here that you, that you listed, Mr. Dumas, and I'd appreciate a copy of that, your notes there, or some kind of list of all those items, because I had to quickly write them down, but.
Should we stab ourselves now or later? You're going through twenty-eight things?
No, no, I'm just saying.
I covered twenty-six, so he's.
No, I'm just going to make a couple of questions on a few of them, but yeah, extremely thorough in four short months, less than four short months, and I appreciate the thoroughness. We are tightening our belt even more with these, with these adjustments, but that's what we do with the taxpayer money. We tighten our belt as much as we possibly can. So I appreciate that greatly. So the Assistant Town Engineer, a hundred percent agree, Rick, is overly taxed, overly staffed, overly whatever, overly burdened. And so some of those future projects and other enterprise funds will now get funded, and he'll have an opportunity to do that work. And I appreciate the allocation of that, that makes a whole lot of sense. The HR Generalist, we had a salary before for the Director, what are you expecting in terms of compensation plus benefits for this position?
Twenty, twenty percent less? I believe it was twenty percent.
Twenty percent less?
Between twenty and twenty-five percent less.
And you, are you assuming that's going to start midway through the year or starting today?
We're looking to be able to start that as soon as possible, and we have that cash in the fund now. But I wanted to hear what your thoughts were first, before we would ever just.
I think it's a great idea to do it now, and I, I share the sentiment, I've shared this over the years, as Selectman Delvecchio has mentioned, we should never have a halftime person or a half-year person in our budget, it should always be a full-year person in the budget, because we're just adding expense to the next year. But that being said, you're conscious of it, you know what's coming the next year, we'll move forward. And I agree, let's get that hired yesterday if we can. Planned retirements, the trust fund for uncompensated absence of three hundred K, how close to being?
One eleven F is not the compensated absence trust fund. It's the Fund to Fund Workers' Comp Claims for Police and Fire.
Oh, okay.
Special Reserve.
Got it.
Special Reserve.
Got it, so.
We created the fund at last town meeting, I believe.
Yes.
And this will be putting some money in, because we do have some one eleven.
So are we funding the uncompensated absences?
Yes.
Okay, at what level and how did you calculate that?
Everyone that we know that's going to retire in fiscal year nineteen, we're going to be funding from the compensated absence trust, which still has, I think it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand, something like that left.
Are we adding anything to that this year?
We're not adding.
Not, because there's sufficient funds in it, okay. Thank you. The Delta Dental's moving to what carrier?
Altus.
Altus.
A-L-T-U-S.
Altus, Altus, okay. Next page. Finally, one of my favorite topics, of course, is OPEB. Four hundred K again?
Yes.
Going to keep doing that? Okay, that'll, for the rest of the board members, I hope that to be my special summer project, if you will, like this past year was. Health insurance, I've done some math on the OPEB piece. We're right now spending about two percent of our budget on retiree healthcare costs. We expect to have some significant retirees in the next few years, probably under sixty-five as well. My concern, that goes up to five percent, and it's not something that we do, it's just something that naturally happens because of our employee population. So how do we fund that three percent growth without hitting our budget? So that's something I'm going to focus on. So far, I've actually gotten our ninety million dollar liability down to forty-five million dollars. If you presume two percent of it is, is a constant. Because that's what, OPEB hurts us when it goes above and beyond our expectations, and I want to fund that.
If it keeps him busy during the summer, he doesn't do the tax questions at the end.
May I stop the tax questions?
I'm all for it.
Okay.
Can you actually make us money?
No, no, that money can't be come from trees, but no, I greatly appreciate the detail you've done in four months, it's phenomenal. Where were you seven years ago, kind of thing, great work, and I appreciate, appreciate it going forward too.
Selectman Ryan.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add, because I think it's mostly been covered, so again, thank you for, and John as well. My first time going through the budget process, so this has all been educational and helpful to me. Overall, I mean, it seems like we're in pretty good shape. I do share the concerns, and would love to make sure that we confirm the assumptions that, you know, hiring some of these people is going to save money in other areas. And if it doesn't, you know, a year from now, we revisit that. You know? And it's interesting, because I believe the schools did a similar thing with their budget, where previously they were outsourcing a lot of maintenance, and I think they, did they add a person to do more than?
They brought them in.
So the pendulum seems to be swinging back the other way. Oh, I trust someone's done the math that, that that now makes sense. But we should make sure at this time next year that it actually did work out that way. So that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
The only thing I wanted to state was, although we're adding the assistant, you've got the Assistant Town Engineer, that was a position that we had for many, many years, and it got cut X amount of years ago.
It's even, actually, back in the day, right, because when Sully was here, it was John Sullivan and Ricky Als was his assistant.
Even before that.
But I'm saying they were both paid full-time.
Back in the eighties, I mean, he always had an assistant engineer.
Yeah, we had Fitzy before we had Sully, right? I'm joking.
He liked being called Sully.
He did.
Right?
So that's really not a new position, it's actually replacing the position that was cut.
Backfill.
Yeah. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the budget as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Or to support the budget as presented, I should say.
That too. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good question, have we had memos from FinCom as to their support, or has the school committee voted their support as well? Just to, we usually go last, but I don't know if that's been done.
A meeting tomorrow night with the FinCom, so.
I don't mind going first, but.
I don't think it's disre, I think we don't, we're not being disrespectful, is your point.
I think we're all, right around.
Sentiments on.
Right now, we're talking about pennies, if anything, at this point.
If the Fin comes up, FinCom comes up with something substantial, I'd be happy to reconsider.
Scott's going to, is going to relay the message that we're just, for procedural purposes, trying to wrap things up.
All those in favor?
Right?
Opposed? None, motion carries for zero.
Kevin, is there any way that you could actually send us all those documents? I hate keeping track of, because I got stuff on my computer, I got handouts at some point.
I'll just have that PDF G in the morning, everyone.
Be to me too?
Yep.
Because I like to check this, with all due respect to Neil. You know, you like, you don't like, we swastika hate paper.
Recycle, not check.
He knows what I mean.
Burn?
Well, shred then recycle, maybe.
Okay. Next, we are moving on to warrant article recommendations. How do you guys want to handle, you just want to go through each one and talk a little bit about it? Town budget, I think.
Pass Mr. Chair, the way we did it was we, either the Chair or the Clerk would just read the, read Article One, and we would just take a quick motion to support or not. And then if somebody wanted to detail, we can, otherwise we can keep moving along.
Because the one article is just a budget, it's just a number.
Article one, you know what I mean? We just approved it, so obviously we support that. Article two is the school budget.
I make a motion to support the schools.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Fiscal year nineteen electric budget, is that, is there any changes that might happen to that, Mr. Chairman?
We're having a meeting Monday night. It worked, I had a, I was in my car talking to Joe, I don't have any numbers.
Okay.
But.
So we'll hold off on that?
We can hold off, we could, that could be, we're not, we're not meeting again before the meeting, right? Or are we?
Yeah, we're meeting the ninth.
Okay. Yeah, I know we reserve like a half, but we're likely to do a non-cafeteria vote on this stuff.
Okay.
So I think we should just button up three Monday, and then we can vote on it at our next meeting. It won't be ma, anything major, they're just trying to run a couple changes through.
Number four, fiscal year nineteen sewer, water, airport, and parking enterprise fund budgets.
Mr. Chairman, I move to support those budgets.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Fiscal year eighteen budget transfers for all funds.
Some moved to support.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
John's going to talk about that.
The actual motions are still with Town Council, so I mean, they.
Yeah, we're just going through the list so that there's a list of what we support, what we don't support.
So when the Town Manager says Mr. Chairman has the board vote, he could say we support it five zero.
Yeah. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Unpaid bills from previous year.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's the number that John gave us from free cash.
Thousand eight hundred. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Five-year revaluation of town properties.
We're going to be passing over that one.
Passing, okay. So is that just passing or are we withdrawing that?
The technical thing is we're going to take no action on that. So if you could support taking no action.
Somebody want to make a motion to?
I would just do nothing.
Take no action?
Don't even do anything.
Okay. Ten-year cyclical, that's.
Same thing, it would take no action.
Capital improvement plan votes. We already voted to support that, that was a five zero. Annual real estate exemptions, which come up for various considerations.
Move to support those.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries. Revolving funds, Articles eleven for, for authorization for fiscal year nineteen.
Some moved to support.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries five zero. General fund, OPEP trust fund, what was that, three hundred thousand?
Four hundred thousand.
Two hundred and twelve.
Because twelve says here.
Four hundred, right?
It's Article thirteen.
How much have we put in there?
Yeah, that's thirteen.
Five, six years, have we been doing this now?
Two point five, two point six million, something like that. Enterprise funds are considerably less than that. Eleven, yeah.
Yeah.
Eleven was revolving funds, changing the bylaw to get rid of some of the revolving funds that we have. And Article twelve was setting the limit for fiscal year nineteen.
Okay. Twelve, to see if the town will vote to set the fiscal year two thousand nineteen spending limits for each of the revolving funds.
Motion to support.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Article thirteen is the OPEB? OPEB?
Motion to support.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote and vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds to borrow pursuant to any applicable statute of sum of money to be deposited into the town's capital stabilization fund.
Going to pass over that one or take no action?
Let you read that with him.
Yeah, figures I read the law.
I want you to keep reading.
Couldn't stop me at any point, John.
It's all right, I didn't want to watch the Bruins tonight.
Any score?
Score update, yeah.
I have no idea. All right, I'll check. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote and vote.
That's the stabilization fund one, that, that amount's going to be two hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight seventy, and that'll get us to a five percent.
Move to support.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Article sixteen is a, sorry, Article sixteen is a pass over or take no action?
Seventeen is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be deposited in the special injury leave indemnity fund.
That was the one, one eleven F fund that we were talking about, the Chapter forty-one, one eleven F.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries five zero.
Eighteen is a pass over or take no action?
John, why is that?
I don't, all I have is the motions in front of me, so I, which, which article is it?
Oh, this is sped account.
Town Special Education.
Town Special Ed, it's, we just don't have any money to put in.
Okay, okay.
It's a stabilization.
We've already established it.
We already established it. This is to put money into it, and we just don't have any. Maybe at some point there will be.
No money nor need at this point, okay, thank you.
Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the town manager to repay at the earliest possible date any and all outstanding bonds authorized by Article fourteen of the October twenty-third, two thousand seven special town meeting.
So we're paying sewer bonds off early, past what they call the call date or the right, that's when you have the right to call, to call in the bond and pay them off. We pay them off now, we have a saving of, savings of interest, and it's something in the range of two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand, something like that. I don't have the exact amount.
Motion to support.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Article twenty, we're going to hold up on because we're going to do the fees on May ninth? No action?
Yes, so we take no action on that one, because all the funds, all the fees that we're going to be proposing to be increased are set by the Board of Selectmen, it's not by town meeting.
Okay. Twenty-one, no action on that one at this point?
No, no action there either, which one's that?
Correct.
That's master plan.
Yes, master plan, that's going to be the fall, master.
That's the end of the, the money articles.
Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, enter into a lease agreement for up to twenty years with a telecommunications company for antenna space on the Oxford Water Tower located at thirty-five Oxford Street. Somebody want to make a motion?
Move to support that.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to amend the Mansfield Home Rule Charter by deleting the sentence from Chapter C, Section Four, that states the town manager shall establish residence in Mansfield within one year of this appointment or take any action in relation thereof. We have twenty-three and twenty-four are.
And twenty-five as well, they're all different, different versions of.
Different versions.
Of that issue.
Of that issue. And we have a citizens petition as well regarding residency as well. And I know Sandra Levine is here, because she wanted to talk about it a little bit. So where we haven't even narrowed in our own, do you guys mind if Sandy kind of talks about her version, because it's. It's a fourth version of what we had. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen, and gentlemen, and the lady that keeps you all in place. How come she doesn't have a sticker with her name?
I said that to her.
It's nice to go incognito. Sandra Levine, twenty Walnut Street. I have a question for you as a whole. In this particular warrant, you have several issues where there are several warrants about a particular topic. Marijuana is one, the town manager, or the residency of the town manager is another. They're separated and they're scattered throughout the warrant. When it comes to the night of town meeting, the people in the audience are going to sit there, some of them picking up their warrant for the very first time, and they don't know what's on it and how many similarities there may be. Can those articles that are going to be similar, kinship, be put together and then just compared before any votes are taken so that you get real input or real output for the people in the audience to be able to make a logical vote? If you do it as we normally do with all the citizens petitions at the end, then something may have already been voted earlier, and that nullifies anything that comes later. But perhaps something that comes later may be more efficient. But perhaps something that comes later may be more efficient? Or selective for the general population? I'd be concerned about having them thrown in different portions of the warrant and not bring them together. Because what you want from the townspeople is understanding.
We have various versions because I don't think we as a, as a group actually have decided what is best.
I, I understand that, what I'm saying is for the convenience, for the understanding of the population, to have them grouped. You can still support whatever one you want, or, or not support whatever one you don't want. But put them together so that you have an intelligent voting body? That is going to be able to make a logical decision based upon all of the different parameters that are being presented.
It was my thought that, actually before town meeting, that we would be down to at least one of, one by the selectman of, of the three.
Okay.
So that would put it as the selectman, whichever one gets chosen, and the citizen's petition as well.
But right at the moment, that doesn't answer my question. The selectmen's is way at the front, and the citizen is way at the back.
You're very familiar with town meeting, and you know the selectmen don't make the decision on when articles are heard. Who makes that decision?
No, but you set up, you set up the warrant. That's your job.
Well, I, I set the warrant up and I tried to group all the town manager questions together, and all the marijuana questions together.
And citizens comes later.
And I followed the normal procedure of putting citizens petitions.
Questions come at the end.
True.
But that doesn't mean town.
Tried to group them so that, you know, twenty three could pass, then we could pass over twenty four, or twenty five, or vice versa, whichever one has, has the, has the vote on that night. And then I usually, I just put the citizens petitions at the end because.
I understand that, because that's usually the way it is done, and for all the years that I served, that was the way it was done. But we never had petitions that overlapped each other, and whose intent was the same topic. They were always different, and that's why I'm asking if you can put. Board of selectmen issues and citizen issues together, and make a comparative chart. That's a suggestion, but I do think it would help your voting body be intelligent and make a wise choice.
Town moderator might even group these together.
That's true.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Yes.
I, I thought I saw some correspondence from our town moderator to that effect, or an email or something? About his plan for grouping these things in a more logical order, because I do agree if you've got four different, you know, motions on marijuana, and three on the town manager. Put them side by side, doesn't make sense to me, because I found it a little confusing as well, jumping around. But I thought, is it, is that the town, is moderator's job, is that what he's doing? Do we know anything?
So I think that that, that discussion's gonna be more sooner rather than later, and that's gonna be part of our preparation meetings that we're gonna be having with Mrs. McKay. And so I know that he's concerned about the multiple articles and the fact that there's many different.
Right.
Versions of the same thing.
Sometimes they, they sound very similar, so it's hard to figure out what the difference is from one to the next.
So that's something certainly I'll, I'll follow up with him on in our pre-meeting.
Okay, and, and again, what I'm asking, probably more importantly than just grouping them together, because we take them one by one? Is have a comparison chart for all of those of one group, of the same group. All of the marijuana ones, have a comparison chart of all the residency requirements. Have a comparison chart so that the people can tell what they're trying to vote on, and they can compare one to the other. If you vote article twenty three, then anything coming on that topic after article twenty three is null and void, because you've already voted it. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
That's easy enough to do.
Okay.
As far as who, how would they get taken, it's gonna be up to.
No, that, that doesn't matter, it's just that when we get to that portion, where there are several conflicts? That they're all treated equally and at the same time. Okay.
That's fair, it's up to Bob.
Pardon?
I agree, it's just Bob has to make the final call.
Right, oh yeah.
But to do the slide, that's, that's very easy to say. Article twenty, whatever, twenty three says.
Explains this, yes.
And the citizen's petition says this.
Yes.
So everybody's got one page, and it's easy to look at.
Yeah, I don't care if they come at the very end of the meeting, or if they come at ten fifteen, it doesn't matter. As long as they come equally acknowledged and compared. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's step one, step two is now to tell you what my petition is. Mine is article forty two, I believe.
Yeah, forty seven hundred.
Yes, it's on page seventeen. Mine is the only article on residency? That does not require a change to the charter. I don't want to change the charter, I think the charter is a very good constitution for the, for the town of Mansfield. And I think it's flexible, and it has served us very well, because we've made it flexible. So I don't really want to change the charter. What I have suggested? Is, oh, and I do, I will address the fact that I've heard that, and it's written in the warrant? That several times when we have had search for new town managers, we didn't get a lot of applicants. Well, number one? At this exact moment? There are only three hundred and sixty one people who manage? In the whole Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is not like lawyers, there are thousands of them, it's not like teachers, there are multiple thousands of them. It's not like any other occupation, it's very, very different. Also, even in universities, it's probably one of the smaller study groupings that you have. It's just not big, because there are not a lot of call? Say for managing a community. So if you had forty or fifty applicants for the town? Probably? More than half of them, maybe thirty of them? Might not have any qualifications or minimal qualifications, and probably not much experience. So quantity does not equate to quality.
May I just make a quick comment on that?
You may.
I agree with what you're saying, however, being on the search committee? We were told that people did not apply because of that. So that, people we didn't even see. So you're right, there's only a certain number, there's only three hundred and fifty one cities and towns, hundred percent correct.
Right.
However, there might have been people that might have applied, but they didn't because of that issue.
And not everybody who might apply is going to be a fit for this town. So I, I, I'm totally unconcerned about the people who didn't apply, that's only a speculation? On the part of the search committee that you had doing it. It's not a hard fact.
I, I think it's more than just speculation, when you have a neighboring town, that's, they're offering a job? For the same sized town, for less money, and they get fifty something applicants, and we get fifteen.
That doesn't mean, I mean, you got fifteen, but look what you got. You didn't need fifty. So I don't think, again, that quantity equates to quality. I, I really don't, that is my opinion, and you certainly can disagree with me. And that's all right, but anyway, going back to my particular warrant issue? The only thing that I'm asking for? Is a change to give the board of selectmen greater? Executive powers. You have executive decision making throughout everything you do. And in this particular case? You make an executive decision as to whether or not, according to my article? If an applicant comes from a town? Whose border touches Mansfield's border? You have the prerogative? Of saying that the particular person does not have to live within the town? Or does not have to have residence within the town? The, and also, part of it is, every time you renew that contract? You would also renew? The vote as to whether that person takes up residence in the town, or does not take up residence in the town? So that it's a continuum. And it's the only one that does not ask for charter change. I, I really don't think we should change the charter. When you begin to change the charter very much? You end up having to have a charter study committee, and I've been on a couple of those. They're expensive, it requires another vote. It comes back to the town. All the work you do is voted yes or no by the townspeople. So you may spend a whole year doing something, and the town could say, no, we don't want it. It, I think you should try to stay away from anything that tries? Or portends to give you a reason for a charter study commission? And, and, and I don't, did you have a question of me?
To the chair, please. Uh, thank you, yeah, I just, just for clarification, Ms. Levine? Now you're saying this isn't a change to the charter, but actually it, it is a change.
No, it isn't, because you do not change anything that's in the charter. When that person comes to town? The board still has a charter requirement that says? You will take up residency. The only thing that you do? Charter remains the same.
That is a change to the residency requirement.
No.
After living within certain different towns, not just Mansfield.
It's not. It's a, it is only a change to your executive power. It is not a change to the.
And is it your reading of the other articles that those would require a, a charter commission? I'm trying to.
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, so.
What I said is, what I said was, if you start changing the charter much? Then you have to have a charter study commission, because then it's no longer the charter that you originally had. What I'm saying about my article is, the charter stays exactly the same. The person hi- is hired, the person is told? As part of your charter, you are here to make residence here in the town. You'll be hired under that particular circumstance. You, as the board? Have the executive power? To change the requirement? According to your desires, but it doesn't take it out of the charter.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just not following that, but I.
Sorry.
I, I don't have a law degree, I guess.
If you could just wrap this up, because we still have like thirty seconds.
I'm done.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions of me?
I was just gonna ask, um, I can run this meeting, don't worry.
Okay.
Selectmen Ryan, do you have any questions for Sandy before she's.
No, no, I think that's, I, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a quick one, uh, so why not remove the part resides in a community whose legal border abuts any legal Mansfield border?
Pardon?
Why, why not remove the part that says, that requires a person to reside in a community? If we have the executive power to make this exemption, exception, exemption, exception, I don't know what word is. Why have a limitation there that says they must live in a community whose legal border? Abuts any legal Mansfield border, why not just open up the window?
Because I really don't want my town manager to be living in Salem.
I don't think we do either.
Nor do I want them living down at Harwich. So I, I want them to be close, I want them to know Mansfield, and even at that? If you do, do, if you do make that change and that discretionary exemption? That person is still not going to be able to vote here unless they say that? Whatever residence they pick here, if they choose to have even just a mailbox? That this is their primary residence, and they give up residency, primary residency in the, in the community they live. We have somebody that does that every single year in town, and, and they, they don't live here, but they vote here.
Do, do you feel that we already have this power today?
Yeah, I really do, I just don't think it's ever been exercised, and I don't think that it's ever been pinpointed? To become something that can be used precisely on this. You have executive power.
All right, thank you, I would, I'd like to hear from our attorneys on that to see whether we do have that power.
I think on, on our May ninth meeting, we gotta clean up.
Okay.
And kind of get down to the nitty gritty, nitty gritty. We were doing placeholders, making sure all our options were open till we.
Thank you for letting me explain.
Oh, you're welcome. Good night, Sandy. Okay, that being said, we'll move on to? Article? Twenty six? Which is the gender neutral where it says? Select board, select board members. Does anybody want to make a motion regarding that?
I'll move to support that.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries five zero. Article twenty seven? Oh, hold on. Okay, that's it for us on.
Let's plan a board support.
Just an FYI, it's two to two.
Oh.
First period.
All right, so.
Start the soccer game.
Well, if it was the Cubs, he'd be telling us every five seconds. John.
April, October yet.
Twenty eight, take the next one? We're skipping over these.
Twenty seven to twenty eight were planning board related. Twenty nine, thirty, thirty one? I'm sorry, twenty nine, thirty, and thirty one are marijuana related.
All right, twenty nine, I'm looking for the ones that's sponsored by us.
Well, every, every article is technically sponsored by the board of selectmen, according to town council.
Initiated by us.
Right, but I'm talking, we're not? We're not making recommendations, though, are we, on the, the planning board articles at this point? I haven't, I haven't had anything from planning board that they've even finalized any of this. I think, I think they still, they're still holding hearings if I'm, even tonight and May ninth.
Yep.
So.
Thirty four, thirty five, thirty six?
Thirty two is a, is a relocation of Willow Street. Again, that was, that was planning board.
That was voted, that was voted.
Approved the thing?
You guys just, last meeting.
Yeah, didn't we vote on that? Yeah, we, we voted to accept it, but to, to approve the article, I guess. Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Second.
It says sponsor on here. Which one? Thirty two.
Thirty three was to accept a gift of land on Wayside Drive.
Hold on, you gotta finish.
It's approximately worth, assessed at two hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred, and is approximately twenty, twenty one point nine acres of land.
Okay, we're still on Willow Street, right?
We just made a motion and a second for Willow Street.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead.
Okay. I was saying, I thought we were talking Willow Street, yes.
It's not that I want to watch the hockey game at all.
Okay, so on Willow Street, they're relocating that bend and making it safer, and they've already done that work, it was at no cost to the town. So does somebody want to make a motion to approve that, you did?
He seconded.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, who's that sponsored by, is that board of selectmen for planning board, John? There's no sponsor listed on that particular article, thirty two.
Thirty one, thirty two? It would have been board of selectmen for the planning board, because in the, in the wording it says.
The original list said planning board.
Yes.
Okay. We've already accepted that, so we can.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none motion carries five zero. Wayside Drive. Can we have a next thirty?
I make a motion, motion, we support the gift of land.
Second. Any discussion?
Talked about this, right?
What's that?
We talked about this one last week.
Thirty-three. This has been a kind of in the works for probably about three years. They're donating, the land is a lot of vernal pools, and Conservation is thrilled to get it. But where I drew the plan, I would be abstaining on this, just so you know. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, motion carries, four zero one.
Wayside Drive.
Wayside Drive.
Number thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thank you.
Article thirty-four is the extending the moratorium, correct? That is by us.
I'd move to support that.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
It's pretty much a no, no-brainer. If everything else fails, at least we, sorry. Not insulting the petition or the motioner there, but, yeah, it's, if everything else fails, at least we have that.
We have more time.
We have more time, right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none motion carries, five zero.
What's number is that?
Is thirty-five the complete ban?
Yes.
Yes. Thirty-five and thirty-six are complete bans.
Isn't there, Mr. Chairman, is there a petition article on that same topic?
This is actually the, the two articles that I had mentioned two meetings ago that I, I wanted to talk about. You know, a year ago, when we had our meeting, we talked about a ban in moratorium, the full board did not support a complete ban. The night that we had the planning board in here, we were talking about placeholders, 'cause at the time, the Attorney General was not approving any extension on moratoriums. And the reason we actually placed these as placeholders was just due to that fact that the, that the rules had just came out. We weren't gonna have time with the planning board to develop any regulations, and then after subsequent to that, we had ran into the Attorney General, Maura Healey, and they would be entertaining, and actually, a lot of things have changed in the regulations. They, they removed some of the, um, some of the things from, for this year as well. My feeling is, I would like to withdraw, have those two articles withdrawn, thirty-five and thirty-six.
Is there any difference in the two? Are they, are they the same thing? I can't find any difference.
It's, one's a land instructions for America, uh, medical, recreational marijuana establishment, and the other one is actually the intensity schedule, where you actually place it, where it says, "Non-medical" is no, 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 there's, it's kinda like two sections.
Oh, okay.
So, Articles thirty, thirty-five?
Yeah, 'cause there is a citizen's petition-
I'm sorry, thirty-five and thirty-six.
For the same thing.
Correct.
Seems repetitive.
Yeah, it's quite possible that could be more, uh, worded more appropriately, given what the Attorney General would accept at this time. So, I, when I read thirty-five and thirty-six, I'm confused. When I read the citizen's petition, I fully understand it.
Okay.
So, take out ours, thirty-five and thirty-six.
Does somebody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to remove Articles thirty, or to not take action?
Take no action.
To take no action on Articles thirty-five and thirty-six.
I don't think you have to vote, just don't say anything.
Hold the board.
Well, no action, but if we don't take action and we support it, I mean, we actually were the supporters of this in the first place. It's, it's the technical term for withdrawing it. You can't say withdraw on town meeting for-
Okay, so you made a- You made a motion to take no action, withdraw.
Yep. Do you have a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed.
Still appear on, at the town, on the warrant?
Yes. Someone will have to stand up and say they take, they take no action. They moved to take no action. We're kinda jumping around all over the place here. Keep jumping. I, I don't wanna comment, I don't think we should comment on the marijuana regulations right on the planning books, I think they're still-
You gotta hear from them.
Yeah, they're, they're still running through those things.
And the Finance Committee has an evaluation that's well that we'd like to hear from, or at least I'd like to hear from.
Yeah. Is that really it for Articles that we can-
Just this thirty-seven here.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
That we sponsor?
Oh, the electric easements and- Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine.
We gotta wait until thirty-eight and thirty-nine till Monday, I presume, Mr. Light Commissioner, Chair?
Yep.
And was that an update you just looked at?
No, yeah, it's the same.
Oh, thirty-fourty.
Okay, so thirty, so thirty-seven, do we, do we want? Do we want to make a motion on thirty-seven?
I'll move to support Article thirty-seven.
Second.
Any discussion? And thirty-seven is the temporary easements, eminent domain, eminent domain of one-thirty Spring Street. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none motion carries. Article thirty-eight is a purchase of gift, a permanent and temporary easement for forty-two Park Street, property of O'Malley. Somebody wanna make a motion?
I think the Chair would like us to consider it Monday first.
It's the same Board of, I don't have the-
It says Board of Selectmen for the Municipal Commission.
So we just do it?
Sure.
Just get it over with.
Sure.
Mr. Light Commissioner.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none motion carries, five zero. Same thing on Article thirty-nine?
Same thing.
Which is, um-
Second.
Yep. Okay, Plan Street. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none motion carries, five zero. I've had a few questions on Article forty.
Really?
Kinda wondering, is-
An explanation would be good.
Yeah, and, and explanation, has there been a big problem with roosters and, um-
You're talking to the finance guy, you know?
The, the animal control officer wanted this to go in, he had it in a, another form, and I put, put it into legal form. I would assume that there is a problem-
Motion to support.
Domestic fowl somewhere in town, and he feels it's important enough to get it on the law. Has he, yes?
I'd like to hear more. We used to have chickens and a rooster right across the street from the ice cream shop. I had no problem with it.
We had a motion, nobody seconded it?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, under discussion. You'd like to hear, I certainly would like to hear.
I do. How many people is this impact, you know? Maybe there's two-hundred roosters out there, living life fine.
I mean, believe it or not, I, I looked it up, and there are a number of towns that allow zero roosters, because they're the ones that start all the trouble with the noise.
But I do know several people who keep chickens, I don't know if they keep roosters or not, I don't know what the impact is, but it'd be nice.
Well, I think, I think, what I'd like to know is, what if somebody's in what was called the agricultural zone in Mansfield?
Well, it does say that's okay, if you're-
Well-
Says something about agricultural.
Spend a hundred million in five seconds.
Right, but there's a difference between what's considered agricultural use, and under an agricultural use, it's gonna be X amount of acres, versus somebody who could have an old lot that was under the agricultural zone, and has been raising chickens for, you know, fifty years. Are they a pre-existing non-conforming use, or if this comes in also, I mean, so it's kind of a-
Yeah.
A building department, Bob Blackman type question.
Enforcement.
It says-
As well.
It says, "No roosters shall be kept at any property in town unless that property's primary use is agricultural." So, I agree, I mean, it's, I don't know where this is coming from.
Agricultural means, believe it or not, it's very dicey about, so much of your money has to be made from agricultural, but then there's also provisions where the agricultural has to be X amount of acres. I think it's, it's a little unclear, and I just didn't know if there was a huge need. Like, is it five people who have complained, or do we have a hundred people who are complaining? I mean, we are kind of in a rural area here, um-
I mean, can we just vote to not take a position?
Who's supporting that article? Vote's from us, 'cause it's from Jeff.
Well, we could still vote to not take a position, but I mean, it'd be nice-
They could still have it, they could still vote on it, we don't have to take a position.
Yeah, I mean, we could, no, but I mean, it'd still be nice to know.
It'd be nice to see Jeff for a positive reason, for once, to, not just about dogs.
Yeah, actually, I, I wouldn't mind talking to him for a couple minutes, because, I mean, I have people have asked me about that, that, you know-
Right, and I don't think this is the kind of motion we just wanna leave to the, to the people at town meeting, because my guess would be that their depth of knowledge on this topic would be similar to ours.
Right.
So-
Okay, so we had a motion, we had our second one, the discussion, does somebody wanna withdraw their motion?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you want Jeff and Bob Blackman to come in, or do you want?
If you don't mind, I can contact Bob, 'cause I understand what I think people are gonna be asking about the pre-existing non-conforming use stuff. I don't think he needs to come in. Is that all right?
Of course.
Okay.
Do you want Jeff in, or do you want a letter from Jeff, or what do you want?
If he can give a substantial letter, not just like a, a one-liner, that would be great. Either that, or he comes in, yeah. Does that sound acceptable again?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Stop being a chicken.
I'm not being a chicken at all. We spent a hundred million dollars in five seconds.
Okay, what else do we have from Selectmen, anything?
Oh, it's like a hundred and twenty million dollars, actually.
Do we have any others?
Article forty-one, which is the false alarms, supported by us. And then it goes to citizens, so that's the last one.
There's funny stuff that's by us, but we have nothing to do with you. See if the town will amend Article two of chapter eighty-six of the Town of Mansfield Town Code, which read about police and fire alarms, and audible alarms, and fines, and et cetera.
If you have too many false alarms, you'll start getting charged.
It's supposed to be like that now anyways, isn't it?
Yeah. Maybe the fees are increased, or-
Good. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve the amendments to the bylaw?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none motion carries. All right, um, citizens, the rest of the moral citizens petitions? Is that correct?
Yep.
And we have the warrant for special town meeting. Is this, we're gonna have to sign this?
We did.
Okay, no, this is, we have to make a recommendation, but the TIF committee has not met, correct?
They're gonna be meeting on Monday.
So we'll postpone this till-
Yes, please.
May ninth meeting.
There was a scheduling issue, Mr. Chairman, so the TIF committee had to reschedule for Monday, prior to the electric part meeting.
Excellent. Okay. Residents, questions and comments? Either they're happy, or they just wanna go home, I'm not sure.
Thumb struck.
Sandra'll hang in there, she ain't going anywhere.
Review and approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to remove the, for separate vote, the application for seventy-five Chauncey Parking Facility, if possible.
Where is that? Who's the applicant? Can you say that for the public?
Parking facility application for seventy-five Chauncey Street.
Seventy-five Chauncey Street, Mansfield, Mass.
That's the name of the applicant?
Uh, Mansfield Parking LLC.
So we have a motion, we have a second, we have an amendment to remove seventy-five Chauncey Street.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none motion carries, okay. Let's talk about consideration of commercial parking facility application for seventy-five Chauncey Street LLC.
Um, we had talked about this about a month ago, I think it was, and the Board had asked Mr. Dumas to have a conversation, or try and have a conversation with the applicant, and I wondered if that had taken place yet.
The, the conversation hasn't, but a meeting has been scheduled for next week.
Oh, great.
Can we table this till that discussion is completed? When's the expiration of this license?
I think April thirtieth.
Uh, where are we? April thirtieth.
April thirtieth.
Can we allow them to continue beyond April thirtieth until May ninth?
I think that that's fine in negotiations. I would think that that'd be fine.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I said, I would think that that would be fine.
To wait?
Just because we're gonna be discussing this issue formally, your next meeting's on May ninth.
Okay.
So it's only a couple of days.
Will we table it till May ninth?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on to consideration approval of town payroll warrants. Our trustee, Frank DeVekill, will be reading.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, here we go.
So, Mikey?
Joe, set?
Yeah.
Nancy, do you have the, the fancy pen for the certificate?
Would you like to use mine?
That's, that's adequately fancy, I think.
It's not fancy.
It's fancier than what we have.
It writes clearly true.
Nice pen, I know about him. Yeah, I think he's a lot. Oh, those are pretty good.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve town payroll, town Medicaid payroll, one-eight-zero-four-two PT, in the amount of three-hundred-twenty-two-thousand-one-hundred-ten dollars and eight cents.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none motion carries, five zero.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve town deductions, vendor payroll, one-eight-zero-four-two TV, in the amount of ninety-eight-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none motion carries, five zero. What's that one?
Hold on, we pull down for later.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve school payroll, school Medicaid payroll, one-eight-zero-four-two PS, in the amount of one-million-six-hundred-thirty-three-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-three dollars and forty-six cents.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to-
Five zero.
Move to approve school deductions, vendor payroll, one-eight-zero-four-two SV, in the amount of five-hundred-forty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety dollars and sixty-six cents.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none motion carries, five zero.
Mr. Chairperson, I move to approve town payroll, town Medicaid payroll, one-eight-zero-four-three PT, in the amount of three-hundred-fifty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-one dollars and thirty-three cents.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries, 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve town deductions vendor payroll, 1-8-0-4-3-TV in the amount of $108,745.52.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Correspondence?
Correspondence. We have a letter from Resident Alex Rothschild of Eugenia Drive about Boston MedFlight. It says, here to read it aloud. So it's, April 11, 2018, addressed the airport commissioners. It says, regarding Boston MedFlight, dear commissioners, in March 2018, Boston MedFlight started commercial helicopter services operating from Mansfield Airport. The aircraft used by Boston MedFlight, such as the Airbus EC-145 helicopters, are very different than the small private fixed-wing aircraft that generally use the airport. They are much larger and have twin gas turbine jet engines. As you know, these types of engines are significantly louder than those on the other aircraft. Actually, I did not know that. I live at 11 Eugenia Drive in Mansfield, which is about 1,700 feet from where the Boston MedFlight helicopter is stationed on the airport property. The helicopter appears to take off and land several times per day, and the noise is significant. In fact, even the baseboard covers in my house rattle. Based on a review of Mansfield Airport's noise abatement procedure dated February 27, 2008, my neighborhood is located in an area identified as a noise-sensitive area, and there's an attachment. In addition, I was walking in the Dorothy York Conservation Area today, which is over 5,200 feet from the helicopter station, and the noise from the helicopter starting its engines prior to takeoff was loud. This noise is a significant nuisance to my and likely many others' ability to peacefully enjoy their properties. As outlined in the noise abatement procedure, the airport commissioner has recognized that there are sensitive areas, including my property, within the town that can be impacted from airport noise, and that care must be taken and procedures followed to avoid noise impact to those sensitive areas. The Dorothy York is outside the sensitive areas and is still significantly impacted. There is good reason for concern based on the numerous studies on the negative health effects of this type of noise, as well as its impacts to the quality of life in these areas. We're getting there, gents. The town routinely requires studies for new commercial operations, noise, traffic, water, et cetera. What studies, assessments, and precautions were taken before allowing Boston MedFlight to operate at Mansfield Airport? In particular, to determine the best and least impactful location for the helicopter station on the airport property and associated noise abatement measures to be implemented. For example, was industry-standard C, Canada A noise propagation modeling, assuming an integrated noise model was not prepared, conducted to evaluate potential noise contours and impacts that could occur over various scenarios, and to determine, and to determine the station location that would result in the lowest levels of noise to these identifies, identified noise-sensitive areas. Also, what noise abatement measures were identified and implemented to minimize noise impacts related to this helicopter service? Lastly, is there an ongoing noise monitoring being conducted to evaluate impacts that are occurring? I look forward to your prompt response to my above questions. Sincerely, Alex Rothschild. And it's copied to the airport manager and to Mr. Trowbridge.
If you could just check with the airport commissioner, see if they responded to his concerns. I mean, you know, unfortunately, it is an airport, has been an airport long before any of those houses were built. It's a difficult situation, unfortunately.
Hopefully, at least got back to it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, you have that?
Mr. Chairman, we have a notice from Xfinity about the new build design for services.
Put your pen back.
Okay. We have a Verizon notice stating that around May 1st, TVK programming on Channel 1767 will be removed by the content provider. We have a letter from the Department of Environmental Protection with information about the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program municipal grant application. We have a notice from Verizon, New England's condensed financial statements for 2017. I guess we have a notice that includes Verizon's condensed financial statements. And we also have a notice from Verizon, yet again, that on April 12th, WFXZ XTECA programming on Channel 20 will be removed, or has been removed, from the lineup at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, town manager report.
Yes, thank you very much. If you'd like, I have this electronic version tonight. I can scan this and send this off to you in the essence of time, or would you like me to go through? I'll leave it up to you.
What is, I have no idea what it is that you're talking about.
It's just, just my update. I just, that I had electronically.
Send that out to us. It's a weekly update?
Okay, perfect. This is, this is the actual update through today.
Okay.
And so I can get that off, and it has the backup with it, so I can get that off to you. I'll scan it tonight, and I'll send it out to all you all.
Great. Excellent.
Okay, great.
Well, is it?
This was the report. So I certainly go through it now. I'd be happy to.
If there's anything that you think that the people at home should hear?
Besides the score is true to two?
Three to two.
Just, one of the interesting things someone may have noticed over the past several days, I had a great meeting with Highway Manager Mark Cook, who's discussed improvements in the Spring Street Bridge and its abutments. This area last Saturday was completely cut back, removed material, placed crush bank in the sidewalk area, and kudos to the team. Looks fantastic. If you haven't seen it, take a drive down to Spring Street. Looks great. Today, started our second area, which is the area on School Street, and it's near the highway overpass, near Mansfield Crossing. It needed terrible attention. It was completely overgrown. We adopted that spot, and all of you've seen today, they get in there, I think it was about 7:30, 8 o'clock this morning, and they started cutting all of the massive debris out. It's going to then be backfilled and then grassed and maintained by us moving forward, so it will never get to that place ever again. But that was an ongoing area. When we see areas that are completely overgrown like that, it's an image of our town. It needs to be dealt with appropriately. And Mark was great to work with that. And that was just a meeting we had last week, and started last Saturday and started today. So it was fantastic. An update on SEMREC. Right here in this room last week, we had a meeting with all of our four towns meeting, and then we also had the State 911 management team with us, who's responsible for the regional public safety aided dispatch areas. And we experienced, they had the chance to experience the great planning work and the discussion that's happening with all of us. And they're going to be very helpful to Rob Verdone in making the transition a more easy one. It was great to be able to have Frank and Christine here with us last week. So continuing to move forward in a positive direction. I met with our conservation agent, the chairman of the Open Space Committee last week, and they're going to be prioritizing this year's preservation work on trails and spaces, and we're going to partner and coordinate on helping to remove some debris off of our common property due to the winter storms of all the trees and branches that came down. We'll be helping them with that. Update with Xfinity. I've met and spoken with Jeff Mann from Live Nation regarding the Xfinity Center. We should be in a position of finalizing the license process with Public Safety shortly before they reappear before you in advance of the 2018 season.
They're starting pretty soon, aren't they?
It's going to be, the graduation is going to be coming up in mid-May, and then I think as at the end of May will be their first show, I believe, for the, I think it's 17, 17 or 19 shows now? Or higher than that?
Over 30 now.
35, yeah.
They've been adding. Things are going well with the public safety construction through last Thursday. We're still on budget and on time. There was one thing that came up this afternoon of one of the footings is going to end up having to be removed. They found some unsuitable soil, and that there seems to be a depression of something that maybe was a prior test pit. Nothing major, but just to bring you up to speed on that. But all is still going well with the rest of the work on the site. CIP, the final work has been done, as you know, and it has been presented to you this evening. Thank you very much for your support, so we can begin after town meeting and get this important work completed. Snow and ice, as of today, the deficit stands at $344,436. There's going to be a notice that'll be included in this when I send this off to you tonight, for Columbine Road sewer construction. There's about 200 feet of sewer main that's going to be installed on Columbine Road from Reservoir Street to the ending by 10 Columbine, beginning on April 30th. The road will be closed from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM due to being so narrow, but construction's only going to be about one week long. Mentioned earlier, but I just wanted to point out that the importance of your support tonight. Engine 1 was out of service for a pump issue, and Engine 2 was out of service for a check engine light. Currently, we have borrowed an engine from Norton for coverage, so if you happen to see a fire truck going around our streets from Norton, you know why. And we're hopeful to have these two engines back in service within a week. Town Clerk Marion Staples wanted me to inform you that the Town of Mansfield has received an award from the Massachusetts Election Modernization Coalition for providing substantial early voting to its citizens. And I have that certificate that'll be PDF to you. And you also have an invitation from our fire union and the fire chief, wanting me to invite you to an event at the Boston Fire Department Training Academy on May 4th from 9:00 to noon, and this event will show firsthand on what firefighters go through when the bell rings for service. And so you have a copy of that tonight. And also to highlight, Mansfield Electric Department Manager Joe Solisito, and the fact that there's going to be a sponsored event coming up for key accounts, certainly in our Cabot Park, on what makes Mansfield a great place to do business. And we have been able to secure with the help of the IDC Secretary Jay Ash to give a Commonwealth update from economic development standpoint. Members of the IDC will be present, myself, and members of the Cabot Park, along with Joe, helping large users save electric dollars. And I gave you the update that I'll be meeting with Mr. Turner next week.
Excellent.
And that concludes my report.
Selectmen's questions and comments, or your business, whatever it says. Let's start with Selectman De Vecchio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did a lot of work tonight based upon all the work that John and Kevin and the rest of the staff have done. I think the process this year, particularly given we have some, we have a new member, we have new staff, we have a new town manager, has gone very smoothly so far. I think I've seen a real improvement in what's coming from, from this side of the aisle, and we already identified today a number of places where we can improve even more for next year, so I think that's, that's exciting. And it's, for someone who's been involved in the town for a long time, and has seen one step forward, two steps back, often enough, I'll just repeat, I find this exciting, and thank you very much, everyone, for their participation. A lot of hard work, a lot of, a lot of spirited discussions, and maybe even arguments at times, that over the last several years have begun to come to fruition, and I'm excited by it. And before I talk for the rest of the night, I'll just say thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for not talking the rest of the night. I'm sorry. Selectman Apeltz.
Gee, talking about giving a speech.
Yeah.
That's the shot back.
This is the speech time.
Couple things real quick. I asked, I spoke to Joe and Kevin, the Branch Street Solar Complex. I've gotten some concern, there's some concerns about the landscaping, and I think I mentioned that a while ago. So Joe was following up with them, in case you get any calls about it. I think that they're going to hire Guarini to take care of it.
I was going to say, I think Nancy's been including everybody in the emails.
About everyone.
Oh, okay.
So anyway, if anybody gets any calls, that's being dealt with, hopefully sooner than later. Kevin, I brought up the details last week. Do you know if there's been any progress with collections of that?
There was one that was kind of sizable, yes.
Are we, is there a process now so we can stay on top of it?
Yes.
Okay. And one last thing, we had, they came in maybe five years ago, cable access. We had asked to have them come in and talk about, like, how they're, financially, how they're doing. You know, it's a pretty big, it's a pretty large balance sheet that I think they have, so. I mean, I know that they're a separate organization, but we are the Selectman of the town, and we appoint the Cable Access Board, and that's something I'd like to know what's going on over there.
We can invite them in. We can also have, get a copy of their financials, too. Fine. Anything else? That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Not much. I want to reiterate what we've been saying all night. Mr. Dumas and Mr. Stamberg have done a sensational job. The list of 28 items that I jotted down, I was happy to write. All the union contracts have no future liabilities right now. We're, we're at where we need to be. That, that was phenomenal. I know John spent a lot of time on that, but you closed that up for him as well. So hats off to a great four months and a great budget. It's going to be a nice town meeting that we're going to talk about some real issues rather than debating over financial aspects. And I'm looking, my sons and I are looking forward to picking up trash on Saturday, with keep Mansfield beautiful and Massachusetts beautiful as well. And I'll leave it at that.
Selectman Wright?
Sure. Thank you. I just noticed one thing buried in the last pages of this, these signs that we're approving. I'm assuming maybe it's just a cutoff in the print, but for the sign that they're purchasing for the South Common, it says Movies Under the Star. I hope there's more than one star.
I'm going to be at each one of those movies.
I assume there's an S on that, but before they purchased the sign.
It was a cloudy night that they were going to have it. You can only see one star.
Might want to just double check that, that is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, minor thing, but, you know.
Cloudy, cloudy night.
Kevin, you mentioned removing storm debris from trails. Where is that, that's going to be happening?
They're going to be working on a list. They're going to be prioritizing their list.
Because I would just throw an offer, if they need volunteers, Keep Mansfield Beautiful would be a good organization to contact, since, as a good segue, thank you, Steve, the great Mansfield cleanup, the 11th Annual is this Saturday. There's more than 500 Mansfield volunteers, which is amazing. We are like the, of all the towns in Massachusetts, as far as I can, you know, one of the top as far as participation, including several members of our Board of Selectmen, I believe, who are going to be out there sporting these, these nice T-shirts.
Ooh, we got new ones.
So, here, very nice new design this year.
I like it.
And the back, we have our sponsors. We have some state-level sponsors, but, you know, a lot of our local businesses that support this effort every year.
Excellent.
Mansfield Bank, Rockland Federal Credit Union, HR Knowledge, Smith and Nephew, Xfinity Center that, that donates the use of their facility for the party afterwards. So if you are.
They're just giving us a shirt now?
Oh, you get your shirt on Saturday. You got to show up to get your shirt.
Where do you get the shirt?
Your precinct captain will be in touch. But, as mentioned, the Xfinity Center, we thank them, so volunteers are invited to go afterwards. I know Donna will be there, as always, participating.
Hot dogs and everything, too.
Pizza and hot dogs, and it's a good celebration of great community spirit here in Mansfield. And for the drivers in town, just, you know, warning to be careful. You know, you're going to see 500 people out there with these shirts, so please give them some space, slow down. We don't want anything bad to happen to anybody. And one final reminder, there is a town election on May 8th, I believe. I hope to be sitting here on May 9th, and that's all I'll say about that. Thank you.
See you May 9th. One of the things that was brought up tonight was about the, the train station and the completion. Have we received any updates as of recently?
Director Hasenauer did, and says that they're expecting to have that finished by December. That's their most recent update.
Another nine months?
This upcoming December.
Which is, that's the predicted date. Okay, so they're, they're looking to be on time, is what you're, you're saying. Okay. Have we received any information on the regional dispatch as far as the building report, the cost of what it's going to be, grant amounts?
Not on the grant amounts. The biggest change with SEMREC, with having State 911 here last week, was the fact that they really understood the challenge specifically with us from Mansfield.
Yes.
And that they're going to rework and come up with a way with some of their supporting grants to help us more in the short term, and to get things moving, to get the temporary location with the Town of Foxborough, eventually getting ourselves up to High Rock. So even though the funds may come over a period of time, they see the need to go to High Rock, and that's the best location. Rob said just last night, as a matter of fact, that the last report that was needed has come through, that shows no major deficiencies with the facility, but that overall, we're going to be having another meeting over the next week, and then we're going to be able to finalize the true cost of Mansfield, the true cost of High Rock, and then all the other ancillary things that get added into that, too. So the improvements that would have to be made, the improvements for radio transmissions and radio signal towers and all that jazz. So that's going to be coming up for, probably for, I'll be ready for that for our May 9th meeting.
I'm, I'm very nervous that this is going to kind of get out of hand and spiral if we don't take care of business on this thing.
We're on it, I promise you.
If you could kind of update us at.
Sure.
Pretty much every meeting, because I felt like we were supposed to hear back.
Yeah, the way they sit it, they were closing in numbers.
We're waiting for the building report.
That was what?
So two.
Two months ago.
There were three portions of the building report. Two had come in as of last week, and then we just got the third one in yesterday.
Okay.
So we're going with the Foxborough location?
Well, we can't, it's going to be the state that finally approves it.
What's it going to cost?
It's looking that that's what it's going to be.
And that's what you just, you said there.
But the important.
It is the preferred site, though, but.
To Selectman Apeltz's point, is the fact that the grant will be paid for, for the build-out from the state.
Either way.
Either way.
Yeah.
Yeah. So even though it may take a couple of years to get the full dollar amount of what we need, at least we're in our temporary location. We're up and running. It saves us from our issue of June 30th, 2019, with our new facility that we're moving into. We will be up and running, and even if we have to do partial, they would accept police and fire from Mansfield into Foxborough first.
Okay, excellent.
So.
All right. Do we have any motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.